Good evening, it's Monday, November 27th, and this is a meeting of the Southborough Planning Board. The Planning Board is now in session. The first item on the agenda is a discussion item, MBTA Communities, the mapping session results, excluded land questions, and next steps. Do you want to kick us off, Colleen?
Yeah, we can connect with a spark for the big map, but it makes more sense.
Sure.
So, up on the screen is a map that came out of our mapping workshops that were very well-attended. And I sort of went through the map first and put down, I clicked on all of the properties that were chosen on any given map, and the shading up there is what I wound up with. And then we created a spreadsheet and broke it up into smaller sort of districts. And the districts are numbered on the big map. They coincide with the spreadsheet. If anybody wants them, I'll put them up on the website.
So number one on the spreadsheet, Fitzgerald Lane, is number one on the map?
Yep, so right up, do you see right up on top? Yeah, number one.
Number one, number one?
Number one, number one. And then number two is way over, I don't know why I did that, but it's Flag Road area.
Yep.
I think that was the next one that seemed to be popular. And then they start down in south, Southborough. I'm going to pull up the other one, too.
And then the column that says workshops one and two, are those numbers correspond to how many times that they were chosen by that particular mapping session?
Correct. And I went through literally each picture of the maps, and I counted up how many times they were chosen, and that's the number I have. And then I split them up into the work sessions, because the groups were quite different. What else can I explain? Do you understand it, though? Yes?
Yeah, thanks.
And there's a few that you'll see. I'm going to open up my... What did I do with that list?
Which one?
I think it's on my desktop. The sheet with the... Let me do this. Spreadsheet. Okay, I'll share the spreadsheet so people can see that as well.
Did you rank these?
Did I rank them?
Yeah.
Not yet, that was what I was hoping the board would do. So this is the actual spreadsheet that it all came from. Let's see if we can't... As you can see, number two is Flag Road. I have the addresses on most of them. As you scroll down, you'll find that some of the properties didn't have any info, and I'm not quite sure why. Let's see. Like this one here, under Area Four, is Custom Glass. And I got the acreage, but I did not... I don't know what I did there. Eight Quarterville? That might be a mistake, I'm sorry. Let's see. Oh, some of these, like N-Star, under number 10, I highlighted those, just because they were, I was thinking they were public and probably shouldn't be part of the consideration. Number 11 has one.
So DCR property, if it wasn't excluded on the map, that was a mistake?
Yeah, and I'm not going by the excluded land on the map. You know, we still need to look at the deeds, I guess, if there's a questionable property that we would like to use. But, so there's all the analysis, I guess I can give you, like 84 Turnpike, Bob Heavy was chosen five times. You know, I think he went around town and asked people to choose them. And he had David Perry talking for him. So, yeah, so I guess...
Colleen, does this column right here, Workshop One and Two?
Yep, One and Two.
So that means that property was picked once under Workshop One, mapping session?
Correct.
And at the mapping session two, that property was selected twice?
Correct.
Okay.
By a table.
By a table?
Yeah, so there's only...
Or a table.
Two tables.
From the two different meetings.
Two out of the eight tables picked that property?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, okay.
And as you can see on the map, with the numbers on it, there's 21 areas that I was able to identify for the board where people picked. Some may look big, but they still don't have a lot of, because the lots are bigger. And I guess we will find out... Oh, and there was one up in the corner under 21, my last one. There was one property that was picked up here. I'm not 100% sure if it qualifies. It was part of the second mapping session, and I caught it late. The total acreage is on there, too, under the, what I'll call the group areas. Just so you can see, it seems like pretty much every, every area had enough area to be a district for five acres, except for the Deerfoot Road, number 17.
Thank you, Colleen, this is very, very helpful.
I hope so. And I put the names with them, too, so people, you know, we're not just being, trying to be transparent about the properties that we're looking at and people selected.
So, I attended the second mapping session, I was unable to attend the first, and just want to extend my thanks and gratitude to all those who attended. People worked really, really hard, and there was a lot of conversation and negotiation on which parcels to pick. I was, I was very impressed and very, very grateful. It's very helpful.
We're still getting a lot of calls from different people asking, you know, where we are with this, you know, what can they know? And I've been sending out information pretty regularly, so people are interested anyway, and it's not all negative.
So we're on a pretty tight timeline. Like, we need to figure out where the districts are, and then we need to work on a bylaw. I assume if there are different districts and different areas, we'll want, you know, some difference in the, in the bylaw to reflect the different areas.
Well, what I was thinking, too, was maybe each member could pick out a few areas that they think might be appropriate. And you can even use the spreadsheet and sort of, you know, highlight in red what you don't choose, highlight in green what you think would be appropriate. And then we'll, you know, add up the acreage, so we see where we are. But it would be a good way to sort of whittle down, see how many people pick the same things. And we could probably do a lot of this through email, as long as there's no reply all.
By...
No?
By my count, it's about 473 acres total at the moment that have been selected.
Because it's a lot of opportunity.
So, we want the solution would be to pare that down to about 50, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
And it would seem the best path forward to do that would be to determine from the mapping sessions, the most popular lots?
That's what I was thinking.
Derive the top 50 acres from that, or thereabouts.
I can certainly go through and sort of highlight the most frequently chosen.
You can play with a pivot table. You can do it. You can just alter your view and look at those in a different view very quickly. You don't have to go through individual lines.
Oh, okay.
I can do it for you when we break.
I will, do you have the spreadsheet? I will send it to you.
Yeah, or you can do it, and I can show you what it looks like.
All righty.
Colleen, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
On number seven, it looks like, and again, I could be completely wrong, when you look at it on the map, it looks like that's, the Dell property is included in that, but it's not included in the listing. Is that an error in having, I guess it would be more helpful if you looked at the map?
No, I think it's, in the assessor's card, it was under EMC. Does that help?
I just don't, am I missing it in the spreadsheet?
Madison Place, yeah, that is a big one.
Oh, no, it says Kens, maybe that's it?
Nope, Kens is actually...
On the north side.
On the north side of that.
Okay. It's just, do you see where I'm talking about, where the ponds are?
Yeah.
To the south. I just don't see it listed on the table, in the spreadsheet.
Maybe put it someplace.
Sorry, I didn't know if maybe it wasn't supposed to be there, and it just got highlighted?
No, someone did choose it, it was...
Okay.
I will add it in.
And are we fairly certain that nobody showed up and voted twice?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. The tables were the tables, we just got the maps back, and so I only used, I had 16 maps.
But nobody went to both sessions, we don't think?
A few people did.
But you wouldn't necessarily have all the same people at that same table. So there were, what, like five to eight people at a table? So you'd have to have that same group at that same, you know what I mean?
To get the same result?
Because it culminated in one response.
Well, and honestly, you know, if they put that much effort in to come to both, give them credit.
Yeah, there was a lot of back and forth discussion on, you know, each table on which parcels.
And I think pretty much, too, every table had at least eight. I don't know, because we were pulling extra chairs to the tables.
Yeah, we had to pull extra chairs.
Yeah, so it was, it was really a great turnout.
Yeah, they have 100 chairs for that room, and we almost used all of them.
So if I'm reading this right, so, for example, 106 Southville had three selections on the first session and three selections on the second session, right?
Yep.
So that means three different tables picked?
Yep.
So that's a pretty high-ranking lot, as just an example, as opposed to a number of these properties that got one or two total selections.
Yeah, and that Area Six was very popular. Not, the whole area there was not selected by any given table. It might have been two or three properties, and this ended up being sort of a district.
Got it.
Yeah, I'll add it. Although, I don't think we're going to consider it anymore, right?
I don't know. Depends on it.
I think it was only one choice.
So, are we gonna, is there, I mean, our intention is to finalize a map before the public hearings start? And when's that?
We have to have a bylaw in order to start the public hearing, so I think, I'm thinking that we need to finalize the map, then the bylaw.
Okay, so would we each just work individually before the next meeting to do, like our votes?
You can, you can send me your spreadsheet with what you choose, and do the full 50 acres, and then I'll compile them from just the members, and we'll see who chose what. And maybe you all choose the same one, maybe you all choose different ones. We shall see.
So Jesse, to answer your question about the timing for the public hearings, typically we'll start the public hearings in, you know, January. That's what I've seen over the past years that I've been here. Yeah.
And remember, we're going to end up with the map first, because we have to give that to the engineering firm that's giving us the technical assistant. And from the map, she throws it through the compliance model, which we've looked at, and then the bylaw will come from that. But we need the properties identified first. And she's thinking maybe we could do two, an A and a B choice.
Colleen, there's a, if I recall, there's a couple other layers. There's, I think some of the property or districts would, we could name as mixed-use, mixed-use development, and there's also an affordability component. I'm just wondering if you have ideas of how, how do we get to that, that step, once the, I guess this is, once we've kind of picked the map, right?
Yeah, I mean, I would think that somewhere along Route Nine, which is your big commercial corridor in town, you wouldn't want to give up all your commercial space, so why, that would be a good area, I would think, to consider doing a mixed-use. You could also do maybe something along the train tracks in that Area Six might be appropriate for mixed-use. But everything else is really a neighborhood. And the affordable, we could, we can do 10 percent.
That would be written into the bylaw.
And I know that there's an opportunity to bump the 10% to 20%, but I don't know the circumstances, is there some sort of application process?
No, we just put it in the bylaw, and we vote on it. They're allowing us up to 10%. And if we go, want to go higher, which we could, we have to do some sort of a feasibility study to make sure that it's still economical at that high, high number. So I would think it's easier to just do 10%, if we want to do it at all.
Yeah, no, I just didn't know if the board felt that we should do something toward that additional affordability? And if so, what would that look like? Or if we just say, no, we're not going to do that this round? I don't know.
Things might be changing, it depends on what goes on in the CBA. You know, there's three, what, three 40Bs coming through? And rentals, they all count, so we might not have that problem.
Well, so that has nothing to do with this? Like, the 40B and our subsidized housing inventory has nothing to do with the MBTA requirements? They're two separate things.
Only that the affordable units, if we do include it, they will count towards our
Right.
10%.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it's all, it's up to the board, it's your decision.
And to elaborate, Debbie, to answer your question, communities can allow some mandatory, no, here, affordability can be a part of this, too. Up to 20% of the units can be required to be affordable, as long as an affordability analysis supports it and proves that the community isn't trying to circumvent the regulations. Up to 10% can be required with no additional analysis. So there's an extra step in there, if you want to go all the way to above 10%.
Thanks.
So, Colleen, do you anticipate, before the end of the week, being able to have this spreadsheet and the map up on the website? I know everybody's interested in this, and I've had a ton of questions from people wanting to know how the mapping session came about. And, again, kudos to you for your hard work on this. I think this is so extremely helpful to have this spreadsheet tying in with the map, so thank you for that.
Do you feel that this would need some sort of a little explanation as to what we did, or is it sort of self-explanatory? I've been working on it for days, so I don't know.
I think just saying that the map ties with the spreadsheet, I mean...
And what the numbers represent.
The numbers coincide, yeah. I mean, I don't think you need a huge explanation. And hopefully, you know, if people are interested, they're watching this tonight anyway, so, you know, they'll be certainly interested in seeing it come up on the website. Thank you.
I would hesitate to post the owners' names on the website. I don't think that's necessary.
Okay.
Is it in the packet?
Yep.
So what does the board think about having overlays that each of us would, for the next meeting? Each of us choose 50 acres?
That's a sensible path forward, from my perspective.
And hopefully, we can come up with something by the next meeting. If not, we may have to have like a separate working session just on this.
And that we could do Zoom anytime during the day, or whenever anybody's free, because it would just be us.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Good work.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Colleen, nice job. This was a serious undertaking, and thank you so much for doing it. I think we should also just do like a QC to go through to make sure that we've got everything, like if the EMC property, there's a couple other ones that I, I just don't know if someone has time, or we could divide and conquer. But I do think a QC should go up before we post anything up, because I just don't want anything not act.
I can certainly go through it in more detail now that I've, it's done, it's not such a daunting task.
That was a daunting task. It's unbelievable, for everything that you've done, really, really, we appreciate it. But should we just divide up? Like, can we each just take a section?
To see if it's eligible?
Yeah, yeah, just to like, if, how many, there's, let's see, 20 thing, we each take four properties or four areas and just verify that what she has in there. I have them listed by assessor map, too, so if you need the assessor number, you could go in and just look it up, but just to make sure.
You can certainly add that in here, too.
Yeah, there's 20.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Just divide them up.
Actually, there's 21.
I don't know if that one really counts.
The 21st one is only one lot.
We'll let Colleen just... I'll take that one.
Yeah, I'll take that one.
Can you do like one through four?
Yeah, as soon as...
Do you want to just do that?
Yeah.
Five through eight?
Yep.
Nine through 12, 13, 17, right, 18, 22. Did my, did I do my math wrong?
There's only 20.
I think I did my math wrong.
So...
We each take four.
Four each, yeah, so one to four, five to...
Five to eight. Nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20.
Yeah.
So on 17 through 20, is that...
That's correct. And then just that, all that means is go through the detail, just make sure you check the acreage on it, and it's on each of the assessor's maps, we can tell you which one it is. And then just check that everything's included.
So we need to have that completed. We need to do our eligibility diligence before we start on our selection process, and we need to pool those results.
Just send them to me, and I'll correct them. Just send them off to me, and I'll, I'll put whatever corrections you find in.
Okay. And then, so, because I think ideally, we would have this task completed before the next Planning Board meeting. So that'll mean, so this is an administrative action, right? For, we don't need to do it in a public meeting.
Don't share it, just send it directly to me, and I'm good.
And then you will tell us which, which of the lots are ineligible, and then we can do our selection process.
Yes, once I combine and do all the corrections that you might find, I'll send out the finished spreadsheet.
What's our next Planning Board meeting?
The 11th. So on number 16, there's a parcel there that was chosen four times, that is, I don't think is eligible, it's subdivision open space.
Oh, got it.
On Nichols?
On Nichols, yep.
10.45.
Any sort of notes that you find, like you're saying, could be not eligible, send those along, too, because I can go and check the deeds and things like that.
Well, I know that that's subdivision open space. All right, anything else from the board? From the public? Yes, sir. Come up to the microphone and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Paul Carter, I live in Riverside Avenue. I wasn't able to attend any of the workshops, I wasn't aware they were occurring. I did stop in and see Karina and Colleen to see what was going on in town, and they informed me about what we were doing with the MBTA. I'm very interested in affordable housing and through the MBTA. I'm a civil engineer, and I've been doing designing and managing road and bridge projects for 40 years, and done a lot of work with the MBTA as well as Mass Highway. Yeah, sure. I'm a civil engineer, I've been designing and managing road and bridge and bike path projects and site development projects for 40 years. and bike path projects and site development projects for 40 years. And I just had a couple of questions, I guess. I had, looking at these, two main questions and thoughts. Does it make sense to consider both sides of Route 9? Does it make sense to consider the Southville Road area? And in particular, in thinking about this, it seems that maybe it might be helpful for the planning board to rank lots based on their access to transportation, whether a shuttle might be, provide transportation to the commuter rail station, whether there's existing sidewalk or whether there's sidewalk in the works or makes sense to serve these parcels, whether there's potential septic on Route 9. I know we're looking at the feasibility of bringing sewer down Route 9. So it might make sense to identify an overlay district that might be served by that, in particular because the major controlling factor in residential density is septic. Okay? Also, it might be worth to consider what the current zoning is. The areas along Route 9 and on Southville Road currently zoned, business highway, business village. And as part of the transportation access thing and network, I think it's important to consider those parcels that have the best access rather than burdening local streets and local neighborhoods with this kind of potential volume of traffic. So, and also, I think it's important, you might want to consider what parcels would be suitable for transit-oriented development. Because really, the purpose for this with the MBTA, the justification for this is transit-oriented development. And in that case, that's where the south side of Southville Road makes the most sense as the best opportunity for transit-oriented development. And finally, what might be development plans? I understand what Colleen said about Route 9 and whether we want that for commercial and office and industrial or whether we want that as high-density residential, you know, in terms of decisions about where we want certain land uses. So my question is that if the board would consider ranking these potential parcels based on these factors in addition to which parcels the planning board considers might be the most suitable? And I'm sure that the members would have these factors in mind in recommending, you know, different parcels. But I think maybe it'll be easier to sell this to the public if it's based on these criteria and these justifications. So those are my sort of questions, comments. I apologize, I wasn't aware of the workshop. It sounds like they were very well-done. And the design shretts, that's very common part of a public participation process. So that's great. And what I'm talking about might be sort of another step to take it to another level. Any questions about my questions or comments?
Thank you very much. And these considerations are certainly the recommendations for the state and certainly something that we're looking at. And as far as Southville, 10 acres is required to be within a half-mile of the train station. So certainly, that area is being looked at. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thanks for the input. I think it will be helpful while we do our diligence going forward.
Thank you. Thank you. I thank the board.
Paul, do you have one more copy of that sheet that we could have? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question or comment? Anybody on Zoom that has a question or comment?
Ooh, I'm not even looking.
Sure.
I'm Carl in Elvede. I live at 22 Apple Road.
Could you say 22?
22, yeah.
Atwood.
Atwood, okay.
I'm not as eloquent as him, and I only have simple questions. My questions are, when you're ranking the selections, the number of selections, if there's no number there, does that mean that there was zero?
If, I... What you have may not be finished. Oh, if there's a zero, yes.
If there's nothing, that means it's zero?
Yes.
Okay. And then, when you're going through and you're picking the 50 acres, like you said, there has to be 10 acres, which are a half-mile from the train station? So how are you going to deal with that? Are you just going to pick 50? Or are you going to pick 50, and then everybody's going to pick another, within that, the 10 acres that they choose to be half-a-mile from the train station? Because you said you're just picking 50. So I think it has to be more defined, because everybody then needs to decide.
I can explain it to you. So we are required to do 50 acres. They were required to be all by the train station. And then after several towns got upset, they decided to whittle that down to 10 acres there. So we have 40 acres elsewhere. We need to have 125-acre district. This was part of the mapping session, too. 125-acre that's all contiguous, anywhere in town. The minimum district size is 5 acres. And I think that's it. We have, so if we did that, we would have the 10 acres, the 25 acres, and then three more 5-acre districts that could be together.
What I'm saying is that you decided that you all would pick 50 acres. But I think it needs to be more defined than that, because then don't you all have to kind of pick what you think is the 10 acres that would be the closest to the train station? Okay. And I think it would be helpful if you totaled the number of acres that you're looking at, because I think, as you said, it was like 475 potential.
It should be on that spreadsheet.
Maybe the one I have doesn't total it all.
Yes, I can.
So on your spreadsheet, does it have a bolded row at the bottom of the section? Well, mine doesn't either.
No. No, I'm talking about in total, the total of the total.
Oh, did I?
Because when I looked at this, I was thinking, what's the parameter you're picking from? Like, what is the population? Is it, how much of this? It was like 475 acres?
It was 472.
Yeah. I think that would be helpful for people to know that, too, if you're going to put this on the website.
Well, we're going to be paring that down significantly in short order before the next planning board meeting. I don't know. Does it make even sense to post that? Given it's, we're going to be kind of moving forward from that, like immediately, given the timeframe.
My last thought was, before you do that, maybe what you tell the public is what you've decided after you look at this again. Because if you send this out, and there's, you know, 500 acres on here, everybody's going to have questions. I think you would have less questions and less conflicts, whatever you want to call it, if you got down to the 50 that you all just picked on, because then it's a smaller population that...
So that's just compiling all the results from the two mapping sessions we had from the, all the different tables? So that's just everything, all the information that was given to us?
What I was saying was, until you post this or whatever you're going to do with it next to the public, maybe you define, go pull together which each of you pick as the 50 acres and then tell people that's what you decided, because that's what you're going to decide anyways.
Yeah, so Carl...
It doesn't matter if you say this is the 473, and then you could get a lot of people that are saying, oh, my God. But if you said, okay, you know the next step you're going to do it is to each of you to pick 50. Why don't you wait and publish that?
Well, so the process for this, this is all gathering information and reaching out to the public. And before we open the public hearing, and it has to go through a public hearing before the town can vote on it, we'll whittle it down, the board will whittle it down with all the information we've gotten. And then we'll end up with a map and a bylaw. And that's where we probably would open the public hearing and still take input. And if people don't like a certain area, I mean, we can, that's what the public hearing is for.
I meant before that.
Well, the public hearing is going to probably start in January.
No, I'm saying is, you said you were going to put this on the website, and you were going to put this whole thing, and you're going to put the map, and you're going to show this 473 acres. But you know that between all of you, you're going to get to 50 acres.
You're saying delay it.
Just delay it, because I think it just would cause, you're going to get to that point anyways, so...
I think you're...
Rather than have them wide open, write out some wide open...
And scare people? Yeah.
Because you're going to make that decision anyways, regardless of what people... Well, I don't think at this point in time you're going to make the... Maybe the input would be helpful, but I think that you're going to make that decision anyways. And it would just narrow things down for people to...
It's a good idea.
Well, we did receive a lot of requests from people that just wanted to see what everybody else picked and what the results were in a big, global picture. So we've heard from both sides.
Sure. Thank you.
We have a couple of hands raised?
We do. This is Motorola Edge.
Hi.
Hi, can you state your name and address, please?
Anne DeChamps, 272 Corderville Road. To be totally oppositional to the previous speaker, we've been waiting for these results. We want to see them. I also want to know if you are going to be putting the feedback forms up, because I know last planning board, you did mention that you were going to put the feedback forms up as well. It's, we, yeah. We feel very in the dark down in our neighborhood here right now. I mean, I'm not speaking for everyone in the neighborhood. I'm always speaking for myself. But I think I can speak for a few people. We need to see the results of those two mapping sessions. We're very curious. It's, you know, it's going to have an impact on us, and we just need to have that out there.
Sure.
And also, do you have an idea when they might be available?
So on the planning board's website, all the maps from both mapping sessions are posted there under MBTA communities.
Also, I believe in the packet that's posted with the agenda on the town website, I think an image of this map that Colleen presented, but without the numbers, 1 through 21, it's in the public packet, information packet, too. As a starting point, it's cursory, but at least there's something there.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I really do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
James Worley.
Hello. How's my audio?
It's very good. Please introduce yourself and give us your address.
Hi, my name is James Nichols Worley, 94 Main Street. I wish I could be there in person, but sadly, it's final exam season. I just wanted to share with the board, I just wanted to thank you folks so much. You might remember, I gave some comment back in August. And last week, I received an anonymous letter accusing me of trying to destroy Southborough and demanding I leave town, which was pretty disheartening, because I think we all have a common goal, which is to see this town succeed. So if I'm just some guy, and that's something I received, I can't imagine what you folks on the planning board and the planning department have to deal with. So I just, I really wanted to thank you for all the work you do. I think maybe my position is well-known. I think maybe the letter of the law is a minimum of 50 acres, but maybe the spirit is, if there are good locations for more multifamily housing, maybe we should consider it. But I just wanted to thank you folks so much.
Thank you, James. I'm sorry to hear that.
It's all right.
We were elected, so we put ourselves out there, but you certainly didn't, and I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah, I wonder, that's strange.
All right, thank you, folks.
I don't see anybody else.
Go ahead, Maureen.
Sorry, just one more question. So I think the point raised earlier is the criteria. So we're going to go through diligence and review each of our areas. Administratively, can we put a criteria and a ranking, like a kind of a... Then we'd create like a heat map, right? Where based on certain criteria? Because I agree, I think access to the MBTA, walking distance sidewalks, a lot of those issues that are really important to how you put, where you put it should also influence our decisions as we, so we can kind of consolidate the rationale and make it very clear why we selected these 50 acres from this 400-plus.
You have to make a decision.
It does.
It's commonly used in alternatives analysis.
Absolutely. So he was just...
So do you want to send me that criteria? And I can sort of...
So I think, is that criteria something that we could administratively just discuss to be able to put against this diligence process?
As long as you don't do it as a board, you don't apply...
Okay, so I can send it to you, and then we can each kind of put our criteria together, and you can send us what the outcome is and how we're going to rank it? Okay, I do think that's advisable. Build that matrix. Thank you for your suggestion.
So anything else on this? I don't see any other hands. The next item on the agenda is the draft bylaw to establish the Public Works Advisory Committee and abolish the Public Works Planning Board and related proposed warrant articles.
Madam Chair, can I just add a couple of words?
Oh, sure.
Just to committee, to the board, that there's two articles that are being proposed for the warrant for spring 2024. Article 1 allows the Select Board to petition the General Court to amend Chapter 447 of the 1991 Legislative Acts to allow for home rule petition. The amendment would reestablish the Office of the Tree Warden, which would be supervised by the DPW, and dissolve the Public Works Planning Board. And this is in response to the Select Board discussion to dissolve the Public Works Planning Board and strong recommendation from the planning board to replace it with something. And that something would be in Article 2, and that's to establish a Public Works Advisory Committee and to remove the Solid Waste Disposal Committee. That's what's before you. These are, by the way, the same articles. I think they were provided back in October, but we didn't really take a look at the wording. I think we were talking more about the plan, the overall timeline, and group that is myself and Mr. Stivers and Mr. Litt that are working on this and the stakeholder engagement and et cetera. But we didn't hear from the board any particular details or comments about the warrant, and so we're looking for that kind of feedback tonight.
Thank you very much. Mr. Maria, Mr. Stein.
So this seems like a well-thought-out article to me. I really don't know that I have any questions right now, so just move on.
Ms. Willam.
Hi, thanks for putting this together. Just a couple of comments. So I agree, I liked both the sequence of Article 1 and Article 2 to restore the tree warden for DPW and Article 2, so that makes sense. As I was just going through, 952A Establishment Membership Qualifications, line 16 and 17. So I worry about obscure language. And there says, "At least three voting members shall have significant..."
shall have significant, relevant, professional experience and knowledge of activities undertaken by the DPW." Significant, relevant, professional can all be debated, and I think it needs some sort of qualification, because significant, what does that mean? Is significant two years, is it 10 years? It's really kind of all over the place, and then, and relevant, because it's just, I think we, if we want something specific, you put something specific in. Do you want me to go through each of them? There's another section, line 23, on the appointments, terms, vacancies, removal. I think it's a spelling error, either that, or you guys are speaking in old English, and it says, "Any voting member who shall remove from the town." I think you say, you mean move from the town. You mean remove from the town? Okay, it sounds like old English, so I must be missing something. Functions and definitions, lines 52 and 56. So, this was, again, a little obscure to me. "The duty shall be to respond to requests for support from a whole host of people, as may be, and such others as may be appropriate." So, I don't know if it's ranked in prioritization, in priority order, or if it's anybody. How do they make decisions if they get requests, and what kind of requests? So, I think it's pretty obscure. And then on 56, where it says, "Shall proactively evaluate, study, recommend, propose, or report on projects to be undertaken by the DPW." DPW, that's a very broad term, so I would think that we would want to either be a little bit more definitive or qualify it, whether it's projects that are supported by government grants, public enhancement projects, or some sort of specification criteria to that, because otherwise, I think everything the DPW does would have to be proactively evaluated, studied, recommended, proposed, and reported on, because it's a pretty broad term. Those are the things that just stood out for me. But otherwise, I think it was really good, I mean, it's doing what we needed to do, so. Those are just my little net picks. You knew I'd have them.
Thank you, Ms. Willam. Ms. Brashel.
Thank you. I had actually some of the same as Marnie. I, on line 23, "Any voting member who shall remove from the town, resign, or die, shall cease to be a member." I just think that is so wordy, and that's kind of common sense. I mean, if somebody dies, clearly they're, they're not a member. I worry consistency, as well with the, kind of the balance of that paragraph, when notified that any voting members failed to faithfully discharge his duties, they have to attend at least three quarters of the meetings, you know, they'll hold a hearing. I mean, this is, in trying to get people, it's hard enough to get people to attend and want to serve on a board or committee, and now you're actually setting a standard that's outside of even an elected board has to abide by. So, I think that whole paragraph is just a little heavy-handed, and that's just, again, just my thoughts, my opinion. You know, to start dictating, I mean, God forbid, things happen in people's lives, and if you hold three meetings in a month, and somebody misses, or four meetings in a month because something important is going on, and God forbid, something family-wide or whatever goes on, they can get kicked off, and they go through a hearing process. And I just think, to me, that's just a little too heavy-handed, and it's inconsistent with all the other boards and committees. Other than that, I thought it was really well-done, and thank you.
Thank you. I think this is very well-written and well-researched, and thank you very much, Mr. Maria and Mr. Litt. As far as the requirement to attend meetings, I think the advisory committee has a requirement to, I think they can get jettisoned if they don't attend a certain number of meetings. So, I don't have a huge problem with that, seeing as the problems we've had with this committee in the past. But I do agree with the, my fellow board members on the line 20, no, line 23, "A voting member shall remove." I think that we have a, in our bylaw, we require that you have to be a resident of town to be on an elected or appointed board, so I don't think we actually need to have that there. But that's, that would be my only comment. Would you like to speak to that, either Mr. Maria or Mr. Litt?
Tim Litt, Woodland Road. Well, thank you for at least reading this. Appreciate that. Let me see if I can respond to the comments, and you'll have to remind me, because it's a long list. So, I'll start with the "any voting member" thing on 23. That language actually is virtually identical to the language in the MTC bylaw, which I also wrote. The, as far as, you know, someone has a couple of meeting, several meetings in a month, this is a question of, you know, in a six-month interval is the measuring period. So, it's, it's not intended to be punitive. It's intended to provide a, you know, reasonable mechanism, because otherwise, there really is no way to remove someone. They either have, they pretty much have to resign. I went through this with, you know, previous town council, and, you know, so that's, you know, what we came up with as, as, you know, a reasonable way to handle it. And it was actually town council's advice to make sure that there was a hearing, because you don't want it to be arbitrary. You think, if people have a reason, and you say, "Well, okay, there's good cause, we'll, you know, keep going." On the other hand, as you say, things, you know, do happen, and you would like to have a way to make sure that the committee functions. You know, we've seen with the previous committee what happens when a committee doesn't function. So, that's, that's that part. As far as, as the functions and definitions comments from Ms. Willam, I thought it was important to outline something, but I also thought it was important not to try and micromanage and get to the point where you sort of have to anticipate everything that might happen. So, what I tried to do in, in coming up with that list, and it's not in any particular order, was to think about, you know, who are the primary groups with whom this committee would have to interact, and be explicit about that, and not, but on the other hand, you know, other things will come up. So, for example, a noteworthy one that isn't there is, you know, recreation consumes an awful lot of DPW services for maintaining fields and that sort of thing, and the schools likewise, you know, do work with them. So, you know, I sort of want to have a committee that, that works. I wanted to give it, you know, some guardrails or some guidelines to say, you know, this is kind of what we had in mind, and then I kind, I trust the committee members to, you know, figure out what is appropriate and what isn't. The, and, and sort of likewise along the "proactively evaluate", that's to give them the ability to not wait for someone to ask. And the problem we had with the current Public Works Planning Board is that they insisted that unless we were asked to do something with enormous specificity, they didn't feel that, that it was within their charge to proactively go out and say, "Hey, there's something going on, and maybe we should pay attention." And so, this is, you know, to give them that permission and encouragement. Let's see.
Excuse me, Tim.
What else? Oh, as far as, as far as the, you know, "shall remove from the town", that actually, that language actually goes back to the advisory committee language circa 1925, I believe is when that was done. And, and then my strategy in these things is if there's language that has, that has been used, that works, that doesn't upset people, I'm not inclined to, you know, do editorial polishing. But I mean, if there are, you know, if, if there are things that you think don't work, or if there are things that you think are, are missing or don't belong, that I'm really, really, very interested in.
Can I, I, so I just wanted to, with the proactive, I wonder if it's something where you can still specify they can be proactive, but it's not within the typical line of business for DPW. It's on projects that require grants or cross-functional alignment in, in the town that are, because I still worry with that, that broad language, either that they wait and get asked, or they proactively do, nothing will get done, in, in both circumstances, because I think that they could ask for everything, which really, I don't think would be in their purview. And then on the, people might not ever come to them, because they really don't know what their charter is.
Well, so, down under, under mission and authority, I do talk about, you know, evaluating or developing options for things that sort of run off the rails, and also, you know, looking for grant funding and, and that sort of thing. I'll think about that a little bit. I will say that, that what I did with, with the MTC is I produced an orientation package, and every time they've had a member, they've had to suffer through, you know, a few slides that, that go through. Okay, you know, here's, here's where you hear, here's where you are, and here's where the guardrails are. I got yelled at for, for that bylaw as I was developing it, because it was about five pages long, and we got this, you know. It's so long, it's, it's so complicated, it's so involved. And just to tell you the, the story behind it, and give you a sense that I have a little experience with this stuff, finally, it, it got referred to town council, and I was asked to go, go through it with him. So, I produced a version of this where every sentence had a, "This is where it came from, this is what it's trying to do, and here's how we're trying to stitch together the, of the town." And he came back with, with a report that said, having looked at it, it's as long as it needs to be and no longer. So, there's a balance in these things. And, you know, I think, I think just a slightly, perhaps more relatable comment is that there's a difference between a bylaw and the kind of policy manual that I would have in the corporate world. You know, in the corporate world, you try and spell everything out, and in a bylaw, you try to be reasonably flexible. But I, I, I did listen, and I will take your comments.
So, my question is, if we have, already have a town bylaw that requires any appointed or elected members of boards or committees to reside in the town, why would that need to be in each specific bylaw of every committee and every board?
Oh. Not sure that, that, that covers it, but in any case, one of the things that sentence is trying to do is, is to exclude town officers or employees. And that's, again, for independents. You sort of don't want, you know, a board stacked with, if you're looking at the DPW, DPW employees or the MTC, we didn't want them stacked with the large IT department that we don't have yet.
All right, anything else?
So, to the question regarding lines 16 and 17, would you consider striking?
Oh, the, oh, the professional expertise thing. I knew there was one I didn't talk about. So, I've actually been, been thinking about changing the word "professional" to "work experience", because I think professional implies.
Right, but to Lisa's point, it's hard enough getting these positions filled so that we have a quorum on, on these committees. I think restricting the Select Board's criteria for appointment is problematic.
Well, the, the intent was, was that, you know, we have, you know, a couple who are, you know, at large and are not, you know, restricted in, in any way, shape, or form, but that you also wanted to have some grounding in terms of, you know, people who have some idea of what, what the work looks like and what's feasible or not. I mean, you've heard, maybe it wasn't your meetings, maybe it was Select Board meetings, but, you know, we've recently had people proposing, you know, blue-sky things, you know, completely out of the space of things. And if the only person with, with, you know, work experience in these areas is the ex officio DPW superintendent, I don't see it working terribly well. I think when I presented this the last time, I had indicated that the sorts of things that I was thinking about were, you know, architects or landscape architects, or former DPW employees, and that sort of thing. And in fact, there's an open with Bill Kundoff. I asked him to think about, although I, I'm, I have not been inclined to put it in the bylaw. I've encouraged him to think about, well, so, how do we detail that? How to, you know, what specifically, you know, would be helpful as, as the committee operates? I'm not quite sure where that one will go at this point.
Well.
Anyway, it's not that I'm not listening, I'm just trying to let you know where, what the thought process is at this point.
I think, Marnie, I didn't notice that, and thank you, Marnie, for bringing that up, because that's, that's a big one to me, based on my experience.
And again, just going back to, to the MTC, on the MTC, they're all required to have significant relative, relevant, and professional experience in one or more of the technologies used by the town.
Anything else from the board on that? Anyone else from the public? Anyone on Zoom that has any questions or comment on this particular subject? I don't see any. Thank you very much, Mr. Litt.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Maria. Onto the next item. The next item on the agenda is an update on accessory dwelling units. That's me. So, Mr. Maria, Ms. Cahill, and Mr. Dennington have been working on a bylaw to amend our accessory apartments by special permit bylaw to make accessory dwelling, dwelling units by right. And just wanted to update the board that they had a meeting last week. And Mr. Dennington is going to ask the Select Board to sponsor an article for spring town meeting. And my question to the board is what role the board wants to play, if we want to write the bylaw, help write the bylaw, or just wait for the hearing? And my second question is that there, there's a housing bond bill that will require every municipality to have accessory dwelling units by right. It hasn't passed through the legislature yet. It's expected that will happen this summer, but I'm wondering if we want to wait and see what that looks like before we pass a bylaw, so we don't have to change a bylaw once we pass it. So, that's, those are my two questions to the board.
So, it seems like the planning department has got a full plate already, based on the workload coming, leading up to this next town meeting. So, I would. So I would encourage delaying this until you had said the state was gonna pass legislation, so.
Ms. Willheim?
I have the same question. I would also, I think in light of Jesse's comments about just our capacity and bandwidth, I don't know if we can take it on. And I don't know if the urgency is there, if we just wait to see what happens with the, the bond bill.
Mr. Maria?
I have the same question also as Mr. Dennington. He had reached out to Jamie Eldridge, um, and I believe he's received about the same information that we had gotten from, um, when we were speaking to the folks at MAPC and Metro West Regional Collaborative, that they're hopeful for, that if it does pass, it would be sometime in July, or something about there. I will just remind, um, the board that we have a short-term goal, that's Planning Board goal, to create strategies to offer more diversity in housing, encourage alternatives to large, single-family houses that allow young professionals and families to reside in Southborough and seniors to stay in town. And, um, specifically, master plan goal, land use 2.4, amend the zoning bylaw to allow accessory apartments by right. So that's where this comes from. The group did discuss, the working group did discuss this and whether or not we should, you know, wait, see what happens, and also for a special fall meeting. And, um, being uncertain whether MBTA Communities is going to go through, our backup, I think, on this board is that then it would move to the fall, and, um, that would be, um, you know, also busy, still a busy time. So I would just say, seeing that this is a short-term goal, um, you know, that this is maybe where, and, and we fall below the number for affordable housing right now. I know that there's a lot in the works, though. That's maybe where some of this is coming from, and, and Mr. Dennington is going to reach out on December 5th and see how the Select Board feel about sponsoring. I would add that, um, in my research, we, we did sort of divvy up some of the Metro West towns and look at the bylaws. We were able to find, um, a couple that really resonated with that particular master plan goal. And just to note that it was typically the Planning Boards of towns that were bringing forward that, um, that bylaw. Thanks.
Ms. Barshio?
Thank you, and, and Deb, thank you for, you know, working with Doris and, excuse me, Andrew on this as well. I also agree that if something is coming potentially this summer, it seems like it could be doing double the work if we put something together, as Mimi said, and then have to come back and make changes to it. Depending on what happens with MBTA and other things, I mean, a fall town meeting is always an option. And, um, it would make sense that Planning Board would be involved in this. And, um, so I, I would ask the Select Board to put this off until potentially the fall. Thank you.
If I could just add one more thing. I would just say, knowing how lo, I mean, if we think of a board, at the board level here, how long it took for the Housing Choice Act to go through, when I took a look at the proposed legislation for the housing bond bill, which is by right legislation, I think it's a very aggressive, um, bill, and I have no knowledge of whether it will actually go through in the short time that they expect it to. So that, that's, you know, just an idea that we, it may not actually be July, but it could be. We don't know.
Yeah, well, my concern is like the MBTA, there were many towns that put through multifamily housing bylaws, and then the MBTA came out, and they were out of compliance, and they had to go and rework that all over again. I just don't, you know, this group has been working for a year and a half. I don't see why we have to, uh, do warp speed all of a sudden. And I don't, I think, I don't want to speak for the board, but when we've taken a straw pull before, it seems that the Planning Board was in favor of accessory dwelling units by right. But I just, um, get a little nauseous when we do warp speed zoning. But I would just...
But it also stands a really good chance of not passing if we try to rush through something. Especially in the context of being on the same, like, the idea to me of doing this on the same town meeting as MBTA Communities is potentially thorny. So I'm 100% in agreement. Well, but at the same time, I am very much in favor of ADUs in town. So it's just actually a matter of how we're gonna do it, and timing is everything. I think that we will get it done in the near future, but it may not be immediately at the next town meeting.
Anything else on the board on this? Anyone in the audience have a question or comment? Yes, sir. You have to come back to the microphone and introduce yourself. We're very formal here.
No, that's fine. I'm Paul Carter, Six Hillside Avenue. I think the, the board is very wise in indicating their support, but it makes sense to, to have others do all the homework and vet this whole thing, uh, rather than the, the Planning Board staff.
Thank you.
I'm, if I could also clarify, because I've been confused about this. I, as you know, I have thought that the Housing Choice Act had a component of affordable housing. There is affordable ADUs by rights in the Massachusetts statute. And it was passed as part of the Economic Development Bill in 2020, which is the same legislative act that the MBTA Communities came out of. So there is already, um, by right, ADUs by right. And so since 2020, many communities have been passing, um, changes to their zoning laws for this. I don't exactly...
But it's not a requirement.
It's not a requirement, no, no.
It was just an updated definition.
It actually changed the, um, the, uh, voting, the, the number of votes that were needed at town meeting from a super majority to, to majority, right. But the, the framework for following that is already out in, in the law, and it's being followed by some towns. I've been attempting to find out, um, MAPC had put out a report in 2018 that looked at, you know, the Metro West towns and how many towns had ADUs by rights, and where they had certain stipulations and that sort of thing. There were, there's several communities, I'd say probably 40 or, I don't know, 40 to 60 or more that were in 2018, and that was before the economic development legislation. And I will attempt maybe for a, a future meeting to get the, to get the updated information. But it's not to say that nobody's got, you know, nobody's done the work, because actually, Westborough and Northborough have two very good ADU by right zoning, zoning changes.
Very good, thank you. I don't see any hands raised on Zoom. Anyone on Zoom who has a question or comment on this issue? Seeing none, we will move on. Thank you, Mr. Maria.
Yeah, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, St. Mark's School Parking Lot at St. Mark's Street Major Site Plan.
Want me to give a quick update? Please. All right. So this is the continued public hearing for a major site plan approval application for the St. Mark's School Parking Lot proposed at the northwest corner of the new St. Mark's intersection with Marlborough Road. The previous public hearing was on November 6th. We received submission number three, a revised submission, we call it number three even though it's written, from Haley and Ward with plans dated November 9th. Stormwater report as well dated November 8th. It was submitted to Fussin O'Neill for review, um, submitted to the Planning Board, and also distributed to the town departments. We did not receive any new town comments, uh, town department comments. The last one was, um, the DPW requesting a stop sign at the entrance or exit of the parking lot. We also received, uh, rendering for this evening's discussion from the applicant team to help clarify, um, the general view of the parking lot. We received, uh, Fussin O'Neill's final Planning Board and Conservation Commission review of the submission. And we also received an email from Conservation indicating that the last review comment that they had regarding total nitrogen and total phosphorus calculations was resolved for the parking lot. And I believe that on November 16th, the Conservation Commission approved your stormwater management permit. All right, and today I distributed a draft decision, which still needs, um, some fine tuning for some of the standard information, but, um, there is a list of conditions, relatively standard conditions, that I distributed to the Planning Board members and to the applicant team. Rob Kuklowitz, who's the St. Mark's School CFO, um, was not able to be here in person this evening. Some of his family is not feeling well, so he had to tend to them. So it looks like we have part of the team here, and that's what I have, Mimi.
Thank you very much. Welcome, good evening. Anything you'd like to add?
Um, I think, I think Karina did a really great job, as always.
She's good like that.
Thanks.
Yeah, so it's, um, and I don't know if, if you has, Karina got a copy, but we did get the stormwater management permit was actually issued too, so that, um, Conservation did prepare that, so that, that permit does exist. And so that's, so we, we received that last week. So we've closed out the Conservation, um, process. But, yeah, no, I think Karina did a great, great job on, on that. So it's, our understanding is that we've, we satisfied all of Fussin O'Neill's comments, both Conservation and Planning Board-wise. Some of the outstanding comments from Fussin O'Neill is, is at the board's discretion, comments, which I assume we'll, we'll go through, um, through your normal course. But, uh, no, I think it was a really good summary.
Thank you. Mr. Stein?
So, uh, light trespass. You wanna take us through that? Please. Am I, am I, I, I don't actually have like, um, like a photometric, or is there, oh, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, so what that comment was in regards to is there is a little bit of light trespass onto St. Mark's athletic field property. So, um, so as this is a new parcel, basically just being added to St. Mark's parcel of land, if you're looking at the plan in front of you to the left, um, it's their athletic field. So there is some light spillage that goes on to St. Mark's other parcel of land. So it's, it's the continuously owned parcel of land, so it's, we're hoping that the board would, would feel as though, as the parcels in common ownership, that that would be acceptable in this case.
In speaking with Karina, and I'm kind of like the resident light person on the board, there would be a need to put in higher poles to be able to limit the trespass. And since the trespass is on the, the other side of their own property, we thought that was something within reason. And I did, I definitely did not want to have to put in higher poles.
Yep. And then, um, on the landscaping, um... Well, there's people actually on this board who are better at asking those questions, so I'll, I'll leave that for now. That's it for me, thanks.
Ms. Willheim?
Um, no comments, just thank you for, again, uh, working as a collaboration with Karina and, and the, and the board. I think these go very well, thanks.
Mr. Maria?
Thank you, I don't have any questions.
Ms. Barshio? I have no questions either, thank you. I just have a couple of things that were, um, brought up at the last meeting. There was a request for no bus parking on St. Mark's Street.
Yeah, there's, there's no bus parking planned for St. Mark's Street. There's no room for that, really, so.
Well, they, they jam in there anyway.
Yeah, so no, that...
So that, that would be amenable to put, have that as one of the conditions.
Yeah, I don't think that there would be parking there, no. I think that we discussed last time, there's another lot.
Yeah.
On the west campus where the, the buses would put...
Yeah, that's what Rob said, but I just wanted to memorialize that. And is there a lighting curfew, or the light's gonna be on all night until the sun comes up?
I think we will have our, we'll, uh, meet the Southborough, uh, curfew time if there is one, but it will not be on all night.
Okay. Do we know what that is?
Actually, I think that it's usually in the, yeah, it's in the decision. So what would work for you guys?
10?
Seems reasonable, but I probably want to ask Rob.
Yeah, that'd be a good, that'd be a good question for the logistics of the school and, you know, how late they're gonna be. I mean, for security purposes, if there's anyone parking over there, um, you'd want it to be, to be lit for safety and security.
So is that mostly for the athletic fields?
Yes.
So would it make sense for like an hour after the, the event is over or something? So would something like that make any sense? I think we did that for, I think the, uh, the town lights at the Woodward Field have some type of wording like that.
Are these, are these on a timer? Motion sensor, like, are there any?
I believe there will be a control where they will be on a timer.
On a timer, yeah, okay. Of course, how else can you?
And also, a lan, couple landscape notes. All plant materials shall conform to the species specified on the landscape plan. No substitutions unless approved by the town planner and the landscape architect, which is standard that we usually put on. And the other one was, um, no, oh, and I think that...
We have the landscape plan.
It's in here, I do. I'll let you dig through here.
Thanks, yep.
Did you want that landscape on the plan, that note on the plan, or in the condition?
I was hoping for both, it's usually on the plan and the condition.
So it's not on the plan currently?
No.
And condition?
And, um, on the proposed conditions, number five, I would just, um, under neonicotoid chemicals, I would put, or other systemic pesticides not to be used.
Or other?
Systemic pesticides.
Pesticides. Okay.
And that's all I have.
Are you in agreement with that addition to the neonicotoid comment?
The systemic?
Yeah, so under, under condition number five, the first bullet, it'll say neo-
Yeah, so under, under condition number five, the first bullet, it'll say neonicotinoid chemicals and treated plants or other, and treated plants or other systemic pesticides not to be used. Let me make sure that makes sense.
I would.
I meant the following is also by the landscaping, approved for landscaping budget, neonicotinoid chemicals and treated.
I would delete or untreated plants. I would put neonicotid chemicals or other systemic pesticides not to be used.
Not to be used.
Seems reasonable. Does that mean in the past we've given you a like letter from a nursery saying no neonicotinoids have been used?
Yep.
You'll have to add systemic as well, or?
Yes.
Mr. Stein.
Yeah, well, so back to the lighting. Do we want to like hash out that condition now? Karina?
Yes, it would be, it'd be good to, so the intent is that the lights will be on a timer and that lights will be programmed to shut off one hour after an event, within, one hour after an event ends, or at the time an event ends, well, you won't know when it ends, so one hour after. How do you time that and how do you?
My concern is sometimes events kind of are all over the place. I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
They flip the switch or, I guess we'll have to work it out, but.
Yeah, I think that with the school lighting, the school fields lighting, there's someone is assigned to turn it off after the event ends, so someone's responsible to make sure the light's off after the event is over. And that has to be, it just can't be like a varied person. It's like one person's responsible. I think that's what happened with the Mooney Field.
Yeah.
Ball field light, so do you have any suggestions?
I'm sure we can work it out. I just would like to have Rob kind of, or have a better understanding of that.
Talk to Rob about it, but you're in agreement with that. It's just a matter of. Okay, so if the.
The lights will be on a timer and we'll.
Yeah.
Is that a standard for your parking lots in town, that they have them go off at a certain time? But usually it would be, it's more like of a time. On other parking lots, say like eleven o'clock, ten o'clock.
Yeah, so like if it's an office building or something, it's a time, but with, like our, the school, the fields that we have, they have big lights that, you know, the events, games are at all different times, so.
Right.
They have to, yeah.
Yeah, it makes sense, yeah.
It's an hour after the, the event ends.
Okay, I think in the bylaw, I just can't recall right the second without looking it up. The planning board, the standard timing, they shut off at 10:00 PM. And that the planning board has jurisdiction to, you know, regulate that otherwise.
Yeah, the only thing is in the summertime, it's still light at nine, so I don't know how. And you can go a little later than sundown with those, the lights, so.
Yeah, so if you tie it to an event, then it makes sense.
That does seem to make sense.
But do you want to drop dead time when the lights go off, like they can't have events that run after midnight or something like that? I don't know.
No.
Does that not matter? Okay.
I just don't want them on all night long unnecessarily.
Yeah, and the dormitory, the new dormitory is across the street. So I would imagine that you wouldn't want to be, I mean, not that the trespass goes that far at all, but you have, you know, your faculty and residential units.
There's nothing nearby this parking lot. The resident dorms are on the other side.
Yeah, it's not like the seventy foot ball field lights either.
Yeah, right.
With the bright, these are just standard, you know, shorter parking. Okay. Does that answer your question, Jessie? Is that defined enough for you?
Uh.
Lights off one hour after event end.
It's okay with me. I mean, are we ready to vote, you think? Or is this, is this going to be finalized for the next meeting?
Well, we have to do, you have to vote on two waivers, which have to do with the lighting. And then if the planning board is comfortable, I know in the past they have voted to approve if the plans are close, except for a couple of little things, and what happens is they make a final revision set that I review based on the changes that you want here. And another revision that I emailed to you today was that your final set of plans need to have the same revision date on all the plans, except for the survey, except for the existing conditions by VHB. So the plans have different revision dates here and there, so we want one standard date across them.
Yep.
Because it.
Whatever, yeah, I mean, we, it's.
Yeah, that's an easy fix.
Different, yeah, different, different, we'll gear those to whatever people want. A lot of times, some folks don't want us to put a revision down on plans that didn't get revised.
Yeah.
That can be confusing, but happy to do whatever.
Yeah, now that it's at the end, just a revision date. You leave all the other dates there, just add a revision so that they're all the same.
Yeah, that's.
And if you put at the date, I'll adjust the decision to that date.
So does Rob have to sign off on the, the conditions? Like I don't want to approve something and have him say, no, that's not going to work.
Yeah, I guess it's, be nice to have, to have input on that. But if there's going to be a condition, we're not going to have an approval without a condition in regards to the lighting being shut off. So it seems like, yeah, it'd be nice to have his input, but it does seem like a reasonable condition. I don't see a better way to write that. It's a great point. You can't say nine o'clock, and then there's an event at nine o'clock.
Yeah, well, the next meeting is December eleventh, which is not too far away. So you can, the choice, I would, the option is that you revise the plans, get them to me, and finalize the decision, you get your input from Rob and get the vote, or?
I think ideally, I think they'd still like to try and get going on construction as soon as possible. If for some reason we find out operationally, logistically, that it is, it is an issue for some reason, would we have to come back to the board and have like a separate hearing to ask for a condition to be amended?
Yeah, so it would be much easier to just get everything done and close the hearing and, and sign off on it.
Yeah, I mean, the reason I ask.
Because we would, would close the hearing and vote on all the conditions, and then we would have to do a modification to that.
Right, the only reason I ask is, is that condition really wouldn't really come up until operation, which would be af, we wouldn't need that to be worked on until after construction. We're getting close to winter, ideally, I think they'd love to get going on construction while there's no snow yet, and that's why I bring that up, is that wouldn't preclude us to continue on the project. It really becomes a, the light shut off an hour after, hour and a half after, ten o'clock, eleven, it has no impact on the design and construction of the park. That's why I asked that question, if it's, how much of a inconvenience or hurdle is it for the, for the board if we were to come back? Is it reopen, re-advertise, notification of a butters?
You'd have to do a modification.
For, for a condition, or would it be considered a minor modification where it becomes more, not, someone's administrative, still needed a vote, but as opposed to like reopening and resubmiting a whole new application, just trying to gauge that, if we know what that would be at this point.
I can't.
If I'm not mistaken, in the code, it says that if, if there's a change to the lighting, this was updated a couple of years ago, if there's a modification to the lighting, it's coming back to the board as a modification, as of public hearing, the same as. It's a modification to the condition, so.
It's a modification to the condition of approval.
Two weeks versus if you come back and all the events that have to happen is probably more cost effective just to wait two weeks, is my opinion, but you know, the board has to speak to that. A whole new public hearing or.
Well, that's why, I think it's yet to.
That's a lot, it's an expense, it's man hours, it's, you know, the public has to be, you know.
That was why I asked that question, you know, sometimes a modification, if it's considered minor, it becomes administrative and it doesn't have to go through that same level of scrutiny, but this one may not, may not fall under that.
Yeah, I just want to check. Can you call him?
I texted him, I texted him like ten minutes ago.
Oh, hurry. Do we want?
In the midst of that, I do have other questions on the conditions, if we want to jump to those.
Sure.
Just for, for my edification, there's a condition three, where the town's engineering consultant shall provide construction phase services during construction to ensure compliance with approved plans. So that, so that would be Saint Mark's would end up having to pay Fussin O'Neil to do construction inspections during that?
Yeah, on a project like this, though, it's not extensive. They usually attend the pre-construction meeting and then make an interim inspection and then do the ASBILs. So I wouldn't see more than those types of things. It's not like a huge site.
Okay.
And they, they will, regardless of if they do interim, oh, I'm sorry, regardless if they do an interim inspection, they still have to review the ASBILs.
Sure, yeah.
So it behooves them to go out there halfway through, check everything, make sure everything's on track. It helps avoid any problems.
Okay, and then following up on that, condition twelve, kind of middle to the end of that in regards to the ASBIL plans, it lists that a letter from a professional engineer sort of found that construction was completed substantially in accordance with the approved plans. Would that be done by Fussin O'Neil since the school has to hire them to do construction inspections to make sure that it was built in accordance with the plans? So does Fussin O'Neil generate that letter?
No, so when you submit ASBILs, with that comes a letter of your record engineer who designed the plans and hopefully has monitored that everything's going in properly, and they certify a letter that says what, what's been built, is built, and if there's any deviations, they identify it.
Sure, so that's just getting at, so it's.
Fussin O'Neil reviews that letter and the ASBILs.
So I was just getting at, so Saint Mark's will have to hire Fussin O'Neil to do inspections as well as us to do inspections, so that we can.
Yeah, you don't actually hire them, that, you know, it's a retainer account, just so it's clear. I just want to make sure the public knows and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But just so I'm unclear, we're going to have two engineers doing oversight for that, to get to that, to the end.
Yes.
Just wanted, just to make sure I understood that, okay? The other question I had was condition eleven, provide a construction, a copy of the SWIP for the project. Where less than an acre of disturbance, so we wouldn't be required to do a SWIP under the construction general permit by EPA.
Okay, I put a call into Melissa today to ask her if this, if they required a SWIP, and they did not, and so that's what I was waiting to hear.
Okay.
Because they did submit an, an operation and maintenance plan that's been, you know, fully executed by the owner with the agreement of taking care of the stormwater management, so.
So we don't need that?
We don't need that. That was in there just in case.
Okay.
So does the board just want to go through the conditions and, and then we can discuss and vote on the waivers?
I have a question, I have a couple of things additionally. So you want to vote on the waivers while the hearing is still open? Does that mean someone at the next hearing wouldn't be able to make a comment on, on that? So it's a public hearing, so I'm afraid if you, if we vote on it, we're closing out the public from future comment, but the hearing is still open.
Yeah, that's a good point. So maybe not.
But I don't mind discussing it, and I still have, I do have a couple of questions.
So just to clarify, in the past, waivers have been voted on during the public hearing process, usually towards the end.
Right.
If you, you would close the public hearing and then vote to approve or not approve? You know, you'd vote to approve, so yeah, if you do close the public hearing, then it's done.
I think what Debbie's asking is if we vote on the waivers, leave the public hearing open, have another meeting on December eleventh with the public hearing still open, and then somebody from the public says, I have a problem with you approving this waiver.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have the opportunity to reopen that discussion? My thinking on that is yes, we can certainly.
Reconsider?
Right. So it doesn't actually hurt us to, you know, from a time management perspective, it makes sense for us to vote on the waivers.
Okay.
And then we can undo it later if we have to, but.
That's right, which has been done before.
Can I ask a process question, Mimi?
Sure.
So if the, the main holdup on moving forward with taking a vote and, and closing this out tonight is one condition, can we go through and discuss the conditions ourselves, and when we get to the end, is there any way to like pause this hearing and give them an opportunity to try to reach Rob? And then we can close the public hearing in a half an hour, and you know, we can maybe move on to our next item. I just hate to lose the opportunity for them that it's being held up for just one condition, you know? So again, I don't know the process, I'm new. Can we continue on and just before we close the hearing and take a vote, give them an additional fifteen minutes, you know, half an hour, you know, to see if they can get resolution to this, so we can close this out and we can all move forward?
Sure. I thought that we're talking about making some changes though, so.
Yeah, so let, let's go through the conditions.
Yep.
You can keep trying to get in touch with Rob. And then hopefully everything will come together perfectly.
Thank you very much.
And I just want to clarify that in one seventy-four dash ten H, site plan approval, it does say minor departures from the site plan, et cetera. Any change increasing the size of any building or structure, change in the location of any building, parking or access road by more than ten feet, or reducing landscaping or screening, or increase to site lighting levels may be made only through review by the planning board following the same process as the original submittal. So that lighting part was added in a few years.
We're not increasing site, well, yeah, the light levels, but.
Yeah.
Well, if they're on.
If they're on longer, you're increasing it, so we consider that.
Yeah.
Lighting's very important in this town.
Let's start at the beginning. Condition number one, anyone have any question or?
I actually have something in the findings. Can we start?
Oh, sure.
Yep. Karina did a very nice job. Under findings number two, it talks about the part of the land swap. So technically, there were two different actions at town meeting, and this wasn't really a land swap. It's kind of colloquial that people say that.
Mm-hmm.
But it's really, it wasn't a swap because there was town vote on two different actions and a payment, I believe. So I think it's just incorrect to say swap.
Yeah, I wrote that very quickly to, like a placeholder in there.
Yeah, no, everybody says it, but.
If you have a particular phrase you would like me to include there?
No, not really. I just picked it up as, if I can think of something, I'll let you know, but.
Two actions that can, that town vote took two actions to convey property between the two parties.
Something like that, yeah.
Convey property.
Yeah.
Between the two parties, and not land swap. That is kind of slang.
Yeah, and then before we get to the conditions, can I bring up something under waiver? So I think we have to do something with one seventy-four eight two B, which is sound code that doesn't allow more than three vehicles as an accessory to the principal use. And I would think that's a waiver request. And that came up in the Fussin O'Neil comments as being subject to the planning board discretion, I think.
The building inspector said.
I think because, I think this was addressed because the building, the code enforcement indicated that that's a ZBA special permit, and under Dover, they don't have to come to the ZBA for that.
Okay, so even, so even if it's, it's in the code, are you saying it's in the code under? I totally agree about special permit, but if this were anybody else in residential A's, that they would have to go get a permit, so that's, so it only applies to ZBA then?
I'm just trying to locate the. Hold on a second.
I would think we'd have to acknowledge it though, because that's one of the, I mean, this is a parking area, and that is the zoning bylaw that applies to parking.
So maybe a statement under findings?
Okay, that.
Is the board on board with that? If under findings, we say that, okay. Because I believe we. Because I believe we have an email from the building commissioner.
I have a copy of it, if it's easier for me.
Yeah, if you could, because I have a lot of stuff here. Thank you. So there was an email from the building commissioner on October 2nd in response to our request to address can, comment, review comment number one from Fussin O'Neil. And he indicates, upon reviewing the project, it is my opinion, as the town of Southland zoning office said, that you would not be subject to a special permit through the zoning board of appeals for this project. I agree that requiring a special permit would be an unreasonable regulation, considering the project is already going before the planning board for minor site plan approval. And this was based on discussions, I believe, that the applicant team had, and I, I did as well, about, you know, Dover amendment and application of that.
I mean, I'd be happy if you put it in the findings just to reference that fact.
So is the board all right with me adding that to the findings?
Yes.
Okay, can do that.
And I just had one more question. I think it's a signage question, so it could wait till the condition. There was a request from the conservation commission about where to put the snow and not to put it on the swale or the catch basin or something like that, will there be signage?
Yes.
Is that one of their conditions, or should that be one of our conditions?
The signs are on the plan.
This, okay, and it, it says where whoever's going to remove the snow, not to push the snow into that catch basin or?
Yeah, so it's, as part, it was, it was part of the conservation commission's review and discussion, they asked about having signage. So during one of the revisions, we added that signage to the plan. So actually, it's on the plans that you have today.
That's awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
So anything else, any other questions on findings? Want to move to the conditions? Number one, the project shall be constructed in conformance with the approved plans and submittals. All restrictions and conditions from other boards and commissions required pursuant to other permits related to the project shall be complied with. Condition number two, except for specific waivers, the applicant shall comply with all provisions of the bylaws, zoning bylaws, all rules and regulations applicable thereto, which is a standard. Number three, the town's engineering consultant shall provide construction phase services during construction to ensure compliance with approved plans and for review of the as-built plans for acceptance by the planning board. Number four, allowed lighting for the project will be shown in the approved plans, lighting specifications, photometric plan, and in accordance with the zoning code 174-12.1, outdoor illuminate, illumination. The planning board shall be notified upon completion of the site lighting installation. After said notification, the planning board shall have one year to review illumination. During this review period, the planning board reserves the right to require adjustment of the number and/or intensity of fixtures if it determines illumination is insufficient or spillover into the adjacent property is excessive.
So would we insert the language regarding the time shut-off of one hour post-completion of an event at that point? You want on a separate one?
Yes, that's where we typically put anything specific to the lighting. We make it just a separate paragraph under the same.
Oh, under the same condition?
Yeah, we, we say, or we can, either way, you can add a number or you just put a paragraph that falls as part of lighting. I'll just make it a separate condition, then it's very clear to number, okay.
So that would be the new five?
Yeah.
So the new six, landscaping shall be in conformance with the landscape plans as submitted by the applicant and approved by the planning board, except otherwise as provided in these conditions. Such landscaping shall be maintained, repaired, or replaced by the owner as needed to maintain compliance with such plans. Planting materials will be 100% straight native species native to New England, cultivars will not be used. Planting material and substitutions, including substitutions to replace plants that die, shall be approved by the town planner prior to installation. The following is also required as part of the landscaping plan approval for landscaping vegetation establishment. Neonicotid chemicals or other systemic pesticides shall not be used. Plants shall be certified nicotid and systemic pesticide-free. All seeds and plant material shall be nicotid and systematic pesticide, systemic pesticide-free, including documentation from the material supplier. If any plant or seed on the plan cannot be sourced, neonicotid and systemic chemical-free, the seed or plant shall be replaced with another straight species. Do we have any, there aren't any really seeds, it's all plants, isn't it?
Yeah, so on the landscape plan where it shows lawn, it, I'm not super experienced with this, but it, it applies to this lawn seed as well, the little seed mix for the lawn areas? That's why I commented.
I've always thought of it as like more like vegetation, like craniol, shrubs.
Shrubs and trees?
Yeah, I don't think it, I'm not even sure, haven't done the research on seeds, but I don't think that's.
So we can remove the seed if that's the intent? So on, if you look at the landscape plan.
The presence of, I think, just the plantings, the little craniol, ground.
Yeah, I do, I, I believe that's, yep. So we would remove, or seed?
Reference to seed.
Yeah, because there's another one up here too somewhere.
All seeds, second line.
Oh, right here, yep. All plant, so on, under the first bullet, instead of all seeds and plant materials shall be neonicotid-free, it'll say all plants, we just get rid of the seed.
And systemic pesticide.
And systemic, yeah, we have that too, everywhere that goes.
And then the next line, if any plant or seed, so just get rid of seed.
Yep, and the next line too, just get rid of seed.
Yeah. So add, and systemic pesticide and get rid of seed.
Yep. Sis, I, copy that, okay.
Did I interrupt?
Sorry.
No.
Just a quick question with the systemic pesticides. Like, I know we found resource nurseries that provide neonicotid-free plants, but we haven't done the research on systemic pesticides. Is that, is that with the commercial growers, do we even know if that's applicable, or I don't want to just?
Well, some have claimed to be neonicotid-free, but they have other systemic pesticides, which is the same problems as with the neonicotids. So they found a way around it, and we're just trying to close that loophole, that's all.
So that might be something, if, if we don't come to a resolution with the light timing, that's another issue you might want to research before they find, I don't know, it, it sounds like you're, I mean, you're very experienced in the landscape architect.
Yeah, we did a lot of work with the neonicotid-free stuff and.
Yeah.
Find nurseries to, you know, Bigelow, that would help, it's part of their, you know, their practice. So I just don't know if Bigelow would use something else or.
Yeah, and I, I'm just fearful if we put in something that's not attainable, not that I don't, I don't know enough to say it's attainable or not, but I, we don't want to run into a circumstance where we condition something and you can't meet it, and then that's all. So maybe a consideration to review that as well. Okay, second bullet.
Any non-organic chemical we control to be done by a licensed applicator in possession of all required permits. Planning board through the town planner shall be consulted prior to the construction and notified of any replacement materials, which shall also be native straight species as applicable and approved by the town planner.
So I put the term as applicable, applicable in there because I saw the seed up above in the prior context. So I think as applicable makes sense there because there is a mix of, you know, there's the lawn, and then there's the trees and shrubs.
Okay. Is everyone all set with that one?
Is that the sentence you want on the plan as well, or is it a little bit different? It was a sentence, a landscaping note you wanted on the plan, and we just want to make sure that's both the same.
The.
You had a landscape.
The same one that we usually do, all plant materials shall conform to the species specified?
Mm-hmm.
And any substitutions approved by town planner and landscape architect.
All right, you can give that to me, and we'll include that for both.
Okay, seven, all utilities serving, the project shall be installed underground, including any extensions from existing lines and poles external to the property. Seven, upon site plan approval and prior to the lapse of the permit appeal period, oh, eight, sorry, seven.
Yeah, those will all be forwarded.
Nine, ten. Two sets of the final approved plans shall be submitted to the planning board for endorsement along with the AutoCAD files of all plant sheets, followed by an electronic PDF of the plans after planning board endorsement. So every, anyone just scream if there's something. This major site plan approval decision and planning board endorsed plans, letter-sized copy of approved plans attached as exhibit to the decision shall be recorded at the registry of deeds with written proof of recording provided to the planning board within ten days after the appeal period lapses. Ten, a pre-construction meeting with the planning department shall be held prior to any construction activity on the site. At least fourteen days before the start of construction, the applicant shall provide written notice to the planning board of anticipated construction date and construction schedule.
Can I ask a question on this, Mimi?
Sure.
So it seems like they want to get going right away on this with the winter coming and snow coming. So is the fourteen day standard on this? It seems kind of extensive to me to wait fourteen days. If they get approval and, you know.
The appeal period has to lapse twenty days. Once they, once the decision gets filed with the town clerk and gets stamped received, there's a twenty-day waiting period for appeals. And then usually the fourteen days is in there because we have to coordinate with Fussin O'Neil as well for availability.
So say we approve this tonight, and then there's a twenty-day appeal that starts tomorrow. So within that twenty-day period, could they actually do the pre-construction meeting? And again, I haven't been on the board long enough to know the answer to this. Maybe it's standard that you guys already do it that way.
I think it's standard because we also combo with conservation, like Melissa and I attend the pre-construction meeting together. And I'm not sure if her condition might state a timeframe as well for a pre-construction meeting. I think there's something in there. Yeah, so we use, this is what's worked in the past because it gives enough.
I was just curious.
Yeah, it's, I've seen it since I've been here and for seven years, the fourteen days has been the standard timeframe. It's whenever they notify us.
Right, so it could fall within the twenty, twenty-day appeal period?
Yeah, potentially, it can.
Okay, okay.
They just have to give us two weeks' notice so we can get everything together and.
Okay, thank you.
Make sure they're ready to go when the appeal lapses. No, that's okay.
Prior to initiating site disturbing activity in construction, the applicant shall provide in writing the name of the person responsible for site disturbing activity and the responsible person on-site during construction to the town planner and building commissioner.
And that may already be in the O and M plan that was provided, we'll have to double-check. If not, it's just a simple email.
Number twelve. After construction is completed, two hard copies in a PDF file of complete as-built plans for the project reflecting all of the project's site plan approved features, also including lighting, landscaping, and all structural stormwater controls and treatment BMPs required for the site, as well as identified deviation, deviations from the approved plans, if any, shall be submitted to the planning department. The as-built plan shall be stamped by a professional land surveyor, civil engineer, and accompanied by a letter from a professional engineer certifying that construction was completed substantially in accordance with the approved plans. As-built plans shall be reviewed by the town's engineering consultant for compliance with the approved plans per zoning code, per zoning bylaw 174-10J for acceptance by the planning board prior to the planning sign-off on certificate of occupancy. Once accepted by the planning board, the final as-built plans shall be provided to the planning board, Department of Public Works, Building Department, and the Board of Health.
So in this instance, there is no certificate of occupancy because it's a parking lot? So maybe prior to, let me see, for acceptance, prior to the planning sign-off on certificate of occupancy, so I'm trying to think of what else we use as a milestone, because you also don't get a building permit. It's strictly a site plan, straight, you know, it's a project without a building. I think you have the electrical inspector signs off on the posts, your wiring for your light poles, possibly. So let me see here, for acceptance by the planning board. Or maybe, or that all site plan approval conditions, that all, that the site plan is in compliance and all conditions have been met as applicable. So we want, we don't want to lose the gist of the 174-10J with the occupancy. I'll just write, or site plan, or, let me see here. You know what I'm talking about, it's like, you don't have a certificate of occupancy, so I'm going to define it that, that you've met, that the, that the site, that the site is in substantial compliance with the approval and conditions therein. Right, and that will be like, Fussin O'Neil will review the as-bills and everything is signed off, that everything's in compliance?
Right, and the first thing that jumped to my mind was conservation commission, you know, through the Wilderness Protection Act, to close out a permit with conservation commission, you have to file for a certificate of compliance. You know, so a lot of times you're, you're kind of, still, you're using the facility, but you haven't closed out all of your documents until the board grants that. So it sounds like a similar, similar means, I guess. means, I guess. You know, you need to have all of that signed off on before the planning board would, would consider the permit being satisfactory, complied with.
Yeah. So, um, as the plan shall be reviewed by the town's engineering consultant for compliance with the approved plans and per zoning bylaw for acceptance by the planning board as applicable. I would just put after certificate of occupancy as applicable because we're already saying by the town, for compliance with the approved plans, um, and acceptance, for compliance by, let me just read this one, for compliance with the approved plans, and for, and for acceptance by the planning board. Prior to signing off on, um...
I'll reword that so it's clear that it's... You're never signing off on this though, right? There's nothing to sign off on?
No. The, um, the as-bills will be reviewed by Fussin O'Neil and presented to the planning board.
Can't you just leave that planning board period?
Yes.
And then just remove prior to planning sign-off on certificate of occupancy and be done?
Yes. For acceptance by the planning board.
Period.
Period. Yes. Thank you, Marnie. I'm struggling with that. I'm like dizzy. All right. Thank you. Simple as that. Okay. Once accepted by the planning board, the final as-bill plans shall be provided to the planning board, Department of Public Works, and Board of Health. That's, okay.
Any luck on lighting?
Yes. Yes, I was able to speak with Rob. He didn't have any issues with what was discussed, having it, lights go off an hour after an event. That seems very reasonable. And he's, again, I want to express, he wanted me to make sure I expressed his great appreciation for the board and allowing us to try and work through this tonight. So it's, again, he was, unfortunately, he couldn't be here, but he wanted to say a special thank you for all your help tonight.
We are the greatest.
[laughing].
May I just bring up...
Absolutely.
Why can't they all go like this?
Sorry to spoil the fun, but can, we were going to add one last condition about the signage for the no bus, is that a condition? No?
Oh, that's right. Thank you.
No bus parking on St. Mark's Street. Sorry.
Oh, yes. So add a condition, no bus parking on St. Mark's Street?
Yeah, adding a condition for that?
Yeah.
I think that's...
So we, we had asked about that at the last meeting when Rob was here, and he didn't have, he said that there was another parking lot that you were directing people to.
So I'm going to put that after, the all utilities serving the project shall be installed underground. In your, that's, that's working for you, right? Anthony and...
Yeah, so after, after six.
So after six, it'll say, um, no bus parking?
On St. Mark's Street.
On St. Mark's Street.
Thank you, Debbie. My memory's good, but it's short. Anything else? So do we want to discuss the waivers?
There's only two, correct? Well, did we write condition?
Yes.
Five? How does that read?
Which one? The, just the last one with the sign?
Nope.
The one about the hour.
Condition five was one hour post-event shut-off of the lights. The proponent just agreed to.
Lights will be shut off one after, one hour after an event ends, and the lights shall be on a programmable timer.
Okay, agreed.
Does that work? Or, well, shall be on a timer?
Timer.
Well, I'm not sure.
If it's programmable?
If it's programmable.
Right, that's right.
That would be the only thing there is, it may, we may find, it may, like we discussed, someone may have to go and shut the lights off.
Okay.
Or whether it be remotely or go to a controller.
Yeah.
Don't know if it'll be able to be programmable because it's not a set time necessarily.
Lights shall be controlled by a timer? Or lights shall have a timer?
I think if it's just, lighting should be shut off one hour after an event.
Right. But we have to put the timer in there. We're going to say, and the lights shall be on a timer.
That's the part I don't, I don't quite understand what, what, what that's going to do.
No? It doesn't matter? I thought it was in the by, lighting by law.
They want to have somebody go show up and shut off the lights.
Oh, true. Okay.
I think on a timer would be if it was a set time.
10:00 PM.
10:00 PM, say, or whatever, but if it's...
Right. I'm sorry.
It's...
I'm not, my head's going to explode. Okay. Good. So it's just going to say lights to be shut off one hour after events end, an event ends.
Great.
Is that good?
Thank you.
So the two waivers that are presented here, Brendan provided us significant information on them, and Marnie and I vetted it thoroughly to have a full understanding of what was happening and why it needed, they needed a waiver or requesting the waiver. So I felt comfortable as, from my opinion, that the waivers were acceptable, and I let Marnie speak for herself.
Yeah, I think the first one was just around the hardscape and the, of loud lumens.
Mm-hmm.
So because of the district that they're in, the lighting, the lighting lumen is lower, but they're, what they're in technically is, is not the same district. So I was fine with that.
Right, because it's a school in a residential zone that, yeah.
And then the other one was just around the, we do the bug ratings for our lighting and for that, again, for that zone, it's G1 rating, but the bulbs that they're going to be using are G2, which again is appropriate for what they're using the facility for, for parking. And it's for the school in that area. So again, it's more technical.
And the percentage difference was a smaller amount, that it was above the glare rating.
Shelley?
Any questions on, you shall.
So the motion is that the planning board grant the waivers as written.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, Latrell? Yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuria, yes.
Rashia, yes.
Want to close the public hearing?
Are there any questions from the audience on St. Mark's Street parking lot, or for members on Zoom, any questions?
No hands raised. We have five attendees in the Zoom room. No hands raised.
So the motion is to close the public hearing for St. Mark's School Parking Lot at St. Mark's Street, major site plan.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuria, yes.
Rashia, yes.
And the, the motion is for the Southborough Planning Board to approve St. Mark's School Parking Lot at St. Mark's Street, major site plan, with conditions as discussed at this evening's meeting.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuria, yes.
Rashia, yes.
Thank you very much.
And again, thank you very much for your help tonight and Karina in calling all throughout the process. We really appreciate all the help.
Thank you.
No problem. And you'll be getting me two sets of plans with the revisions in it, that landscaping note, and if there was anything else that was in there.
I think it was just the landscape note, and then make sure the dates on all of...
Yes, that's the other one. And I'll revise the decision and have Mimi review it as soon as it's done and sign it and give it to the town clerk and get you going.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your...
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your responsiveness, too.
The next item on the agenda is a discussion, 120 Turnpike Road, 40B, planning board comment to the ZBA.
Do you want to update us or where we are? So we received, um, notification from ZBA admin Laura Davis, notice of a public hearing for, um, the 40, comprehensive permit for, make sure I'm reading the right one here, proposed at 120 Turnpike Road, which is scheduled for December 13th at 7:00 PM. And I believe at the prior planning board meeting, it was discussed that a comment letter would be provided to the ZBA from the planning board with any concerns or points to be made aware of. We also received a public, a notice of public hearing for 120 Turnpike, seeking a special permit to modify the 2005 special permit decision due to the proposed use of the shared driveway to serve the 40B comprehensive permit project on the southern parcel, it says, even though it's the end, you know, still same parcel. So those will be at the same ZBA meeting, December 13th at 7:00 PM. I believe town council had informed the applicant that, you know, in addition to the 40B, if they were going to use that access drive, they would have to modify also the site plan for 118, 120 Turnpike. It's my understanding via an email from Attorney Chavel that that would be following the process. So that that would close the loop on that. And that's what I have.
So any comments from the board that we should include in a letter, Mr. Stein?
Well, I think we've discussed a number of things over the last series of meetings, but I don't see them, you know, the drop, was, was there like a tabulation of our discussion? Because we've had a lot of...
No.
Right after, like, I remember right after we did the, the site walk.
Yeah.
We talked about a bunch of things, such as the stone wall.
Right. We didn't tabulate anything. I think Mimi was going to culminate her comments, and the planning board members would send their comments as well.
I think we did that, though.
Didn't we send those to the, we sent it to the eligibility?
Yeah.
We compiled our own comments already, so I think we could repurpose that same letter?
Yeah.
For, for the ZBA.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering why that wasn't in the Dropbox under this heading. So, thank you for that point.
I think the, I think the letters, let me look. Maybe I can point you to it.
Does that make sense to you, Mimi?
It, it does. I have some additional comments also.
Okay. Well, I think my comments were covered in the letter then.
Already.
Yeah, I would defer to that letter, too. I just haven't had a chance to go through
Ms. Rashia?
Same here. Other than, I, I would just ask, going back to the minutes from November 6th, Mimi, you brought up some points that I don't know were included in the letter that we did for the eligibility process. And these may be some of the comments that you're going to bring up, Mimi, so I'll just, I'll, I'll just hold my breath. No, I just wanted...
Go ahead, bring them up because I probably forgot.
Okay. Well, it says that, let's see. Ms. Latrell stated that she did not see a creation of a subdivision. I guess you kind of addressed that tonight. As part of the application, it reminded the planning board, town council had stated that a subdivision was required. Ms. Latrell also stated that the cover letter to the special permit did not offer clarity regarding the lot. Ms. Quinn added that Laura Davis is submitting the information on the project to town council for review. I guess that's basically it, Mimi, but I just wanted to make sure that we covered in whatever letter we did some of the concerns you had.
Yeah. Well, I wonder if we shouldn't re, is it, are we under such a time constraint that we have to do this right now, before this December 11th meeting?
They, well, they're meeting on the 13th, and they like things 10 days in advance.
So I, Jesse, for your convenience, we just popped that planning board letter into the Dropbox.
Okay, it's not on...
And it's dated, um, August 17th. It's the first one in the list. It says 120 Turnpike Road, final...
Do you see that, Lisa? Okay. That's from town council.
What we're discussing is the planning board letter that was sent to Mass Housing when they requested review comments for project eligibility. You're welcome.
Yeah, this is pretty comprehensive, so, okay. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for doing that.
Yeah, so I would, I would add in addition that per the regulation, CMR 7605, 6.052, which is the comprehensive permit regulations, on items that should be included in the application E, where a subdivision of land, it is involved, a preliminary subdivision plan is required, but there was no subdivision plan in the application, so the application is incomplete. And I also have a concern on the special permit application. It seems like they're using the special permit to create that new lot, which I don't think is allowed. You can create a lot via A and R or subdivision. And per town council, 20-foot frontage is required, and that lot has no frontage, so it requires a subdivision.
So does the ZBA have the authority to do an A and R under 40B?
They do under a 40B, but they can only waive local regulations, and the 20-foot frontage requirement is a state. It's not local.
When you say the application was not complete, the application to the ZBA or to Mass Housing?
The comprehensive permit application to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay. You can provide me your notes.
And I think it is also worth mentioning that the previous site plan approval, and it is referenced in the previous special permit, the previous site plan approval was for a parking garage and a patio between the buildings, although they didn't do the parking garage, they did do the patio between the buildings. And one of the conditions was that that residential lot would be given to the town.
Mimi, is that something that we pull up, the, that, what would that be, site plan approval, where it says, it states that on the site plan that they would have done that? And so they partially did that build out?
Yeah. Minimally. Oh, and I would also like to bring up, per our zoning code 174-14, no lot shall be reduced in size, altered, or subdivided, no... no lot shall be reduced in size, altered or subdivided, no part thereof conveyed or transferred if said lot or building or structures thereon and uses thereof already are or will be caused to be not in compliance with the provisions of this chapter. So that lot doesn't have setback or frontage and it has a variance that allows it, those buildings to exist without frontage. But it's not, the variance does not make it a legally non-compliant lot, so you can't, so under chapter, I don't know, I'm not going to even say it because I'm going to mess it up, but you can't use the, that, those steps for altering a non-compliant lot. If it, it doesn't comply to a legally non-compliant lot, so it wouldn't fall under those sections of mass general law. So I don't know how you can, how that non-compliant lot, which isn't a legally non-compliant lot, could be subdivided. So repurpose the Mass Housing and add those additional comments.
Thanks for your thoroughness.
Yeah, I'll send it to you. Yes, sir.
This question goes to the current discussion
Sure.
regarding the planning board comments.
Yeah.
Paul, will you just re-identify yourself? Keep one for us.
As I mentioned, I have 40 years of experience. And for those years was doing land development projects. All different types of uses, including office parks, residential. And two years of that experience was as a peer review for a local planning board. That include review of 40B. The comprehensive permit refers to an address of 120 Turnpike. 120 Turnpike is located on map 37 Lot 4, which is, which is the lot referred to in the approved special permit for the two buildings, building 120 and 118. I believe that the special permit Lot 4 is not a suitable lot for the 40B project because the existing office uses do not include residential housing. The current 40B apartment projects needs to identify a previously created lot that the 40B apartment project is associated with. Not an existing lot that is already in use with two office buildings on it. The permit, the application, the comprehensive permit application did not refer to a specific legal lot, okay? That's key. So, and, and the board has stated this much more succinctly in terms of the two options that the applicant has. Submitting and receiving approval from the ZBA for revised and updated special permit in accordance with local regulations. That's critical. The revision to the special permit is in accordance with local regulations. It's not waived by the 40B process. And it's critical that that lot be identified and subdivided prior to submission and approval of the comprehensive permit under 40B. This cannot be confused, okay? We had problems with Capital Place between the Board of Appeals and the Planning Board. This cannot happen again, okay? So this, the other option is submitting and receiving approval of a definitive subdivision plan from the planning board, creating a new lot separate from the existing Lot 4 in accordance with local regulations. Has nothing to do with 40B. This lot needs to be created before 40B. They'd like to do it afterwards. That's inappropriate and not legal, okay? Understand the planning board is under the Massachusetts State subdivision law is the only entity that is legally empowered to create a legal lot. Planning board is the only entity. The Board of Appeals has no jurisdiction to create a lot. The only condition under which, unless it's under appeal under definitive subdivision that was approved or denied by the planning board. That's the only case under which the Board of Appeals has any jurisdiction over the creation of a new lot. A definitive subdivision has to be submitted. It has to be approved or denied. It has to be then appealed to the Board of Appeals. That's the only way they have any jurisdiction over the creation of a lot. So I understand that a separate legal lot needs to be created under local regulations before a 40B comprehensive permit can be approved by the zoning board of appeals under section 40B, which is exempt under regulations, not at the same time as part of the comprehensive permit. Recommend that if there is any doubt or question regarding this issue and the required sequence of these two permit processes, which is, goes to the crutch of my question, the sequence of the two processes, need to request and receive a detailed and specific legal opinion from town council before, before any more action is taken on this apartment project.
Thank you very much. We had similar questions and did speak to town council. He opined that under 40B, the ZBA can do subdivision.
Absolutely not. I'd like to see that specifically and in writing from legal counsel so that it can be reviewed by other legal counselors who are experts in 40B. So.
And thank you for your comments.
I didn't, you know, I haven't been involved in the process. I only found out about this project. And I walked into Karina's and Colleen's office, you know, a couple of weeks ago. So I know this has been in process. I see the Board of Selectmen's letter. The Board of Selectmen's letter is premature. It's references to Noah Butters. This project, property, has Butters. It has the Breakneck Hill Conservation Land, which many people use. I've used for over 20 years. There's significant impact on the conservation land. Approximately 20% of the conservation land will be impacted by the construction of a four-story apartment building less than 30 feet from the existing trail. There needs to be mention of the impact on the conservation land in the planning board's comments. And, and like I say, the, and I don't mean to criticize the selectmen, but the justifications that the developer is a resident of the town and friendly to the town, that they are Noah Butters, is premature and inappropriate.
So, oh, go ahead. Oh, I was just going to say, I mean, really, it would seem like the next step for this board is to consider, dare I say, request for independent counsel to review the, this. That's probably where it's leading. I don't have high hopes that the select board would grant us that, but we may want to consider, you know, going on record to request it.
They have no justification for not, not approving that. Considering, considering the history with Capital Place and the relationship between the planning board and the ZBA, which went to court. We want to avoid this going to court. There's too much going on in this town to be held up with this project in addition to Capital Place.
Ms. Willian?
You know, I'm a huge advocate of independent counsel and it's something we've never actually been granted. Even at Park Central, because I actually was on that side of the community asking for it and they weren't granted it. And, and I think the challenge is really going to be around the subdivision and who has the legal right of authority to be able to grant it. So I do think it warrants, and it's a rational request.
Ms. D'Maria?
Well, thank you for stopping by the planning board and bringing all this to us tonight because it's nice to have such a well-thought-out, you know, comment, to be honest. I mean, I think that, you know, I'm, I'm kind of troubled by a lot of this stuff as well and the fact that, you know, it's all happening at the same time that, you know, we don't, you know, I think the planning board feels that we don't have a current legal lot and that is the stem of some of our problems. And it would be very good to have something more from town council with maybe some precedent of where this has been done previously. And, you know, how this is going to work because it, I think there's this belief that you can kind of put the cart before the horse and at the end, everything will be okay. But it seems to me that that's creating a lot of problems for, for planning board and, and also for residents, for all of us, actually. So, I mean, thank you for coming forward. I think we have to keep pushing for what we believe. And we believe that some of these steps are not being taken in the correct action and they're going to cause severe troubles later on, and I think we should keep pushing.
If they want this, they want to push this through fast. They want to say we do it all at the same time. The thing about it is, is that the subdivision is not, does not waive local regulations, okay? That's key. They want to local, waive local regulations on access. One thing is from subdivision, this is longer than a thousand-foot cul-de-sac. I don't know why there's a letter from the fire chief indicating support for this project, okay? And, you know, I don't mean to, you know, belabor, you know, the, the boards in this process. And I don't mean to criticize the selectmen. I have the utmost respect and confidence in Andrew Dennington. He led the Board of Appeals after Bartolini was taken off the Board of Appeals through that process. The other thing is, this needs an engineering peer review, okay? It needs cross-sections of the proposed project. There's a 50 to 60-foot elevation difference across the side of this hill, okay? This development is being shoehorned into this corner, right next to conservation land. The other thing, you know, is that in the select board's letter, they referenced affordable housing. We've been talking about affordable housing. Affordable and multifamily housing is critical. But it doesn't mean that we have to put up with these kinds of scar on the land to get our 10%. In fact, we're sacrificing our sites to get the 10%, where if we don't have the 10%, we're subject to these, you know, it's, you know, it's, it doesn't make complete sense. That, you know, their application waives everything. The whole, you look at their application, the whole back five pages is all waiving different things from the, the ZBA. Yeah, I, I was, I wasn't aware of, and I'm glad to see that the board is on top of this. Thank you for all your
Ms. Brashil?
Thank you, and sir, thank you for coming. It's great when the public gets involved and the public comes and has this dialogue with the planning board. It's just so very important as our town moves forward. So thank you very much for coming. That's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, board, for all your
I will also say that we keep asking the same questions. We have been talking about these exact same questions going back to, what, August now? I mean, I haven't been on the board that long, but this to me is not a process that's working. So I would be supportive of finding out a way to make this work. And the system is broken, I think, as far as planning board goes at this point. If we can't get answers to the questions we need as elected officials to do the job that we have to do, that's a bigger problem. So I will just leave it at that, but I'm very supportive to what my fellow members have said tonight and they've sat here a lot longer than me and dealt with it a lot longer than me. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think as we found out when town council came before us on the St. Mark's going through that real estate transaction, he made very clear that he works for the select board and he forwards and advocates for the position and the opinion of the select board. So it's very problematic that the select board wrote a letter in support of this project when there's so many unanswered questions because it appears that we will get town council answers that are promoting the position of the select board.
So that's interesting. I think that that raises the point that that in effect does create a conflict of interest for town council. So in terms of addressing our concerns, so on that basis.
So should we request
Yeah.
special counsel?
Yep.
Should we vote?
Sure.
So the motion is that the planning board send a letter to the select board requesting independent counsel for review of 120 Turnpike Road, 40B, planning board comments to ZBA.
Do you want to amend specifically to the subdivision, which is with the purview that we're specifically requesting?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and any further discussion? All in favor? Luttrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Willian, yes.
D'Maria, yes.
Brashil, yes.
Can I ask one more question?
Certainly.
I got to come to the mic.
Say your name again, actually.
I suggest that the board do not move forward with their comment letter to the ZBA until this issue is resolved. This, this process needs to stop before it keeps moving on, on a, on a unfounded and non-legal basis.
So we actually are not the jurisdictional board on the 40B. It's the ZBA. So there's only so much we can do to your comment is, of course, something I agree with, but logistically, we, I don't see how we could hold up our comment letter.
It's made on, based on a non-legal founded application. There is no legal law that's referred in the comprehensive permit. All there is is an address.
An additional comment for our letter.
Also, Mimi, can I ask one question? Marguerite, when is your next meeting? So if we could get this sooner rather than later, I'd like it to be on the agenda, request it be on the agenda for the December 5th meeting.
It's a pretty straightforward question. It's just going to be a simple paragraph requesting it. Do you want any reasoning behind it or just?
She is detailed letters prospered, sorry.
Yeah. So I think that, given past history where town council has made clear that he advocates for the position of the select board and the select board's letter supporting this project, that we don't feel that we will get trying to find the word.
Representation?
Yeah.
Sufficient representation?
Non-biased legal advice.
There appears to be a conflict of interest as select board has already endorsed. Sorry, thank you. Select board has already endorsed and supported this project in writing.
All right, I'll come up with something and then.
So the subdivision and the, and the illegal lot.
Yeah. Paul, do you have another copy of your comment?
Here.
You don't need it? Oh, we have one. I just want one for the record here.
Yeah, you have.
Okay.
So, anything else on 120? Anybody in Zoom has any additional comments or questions on this project?
Thanks.
Okay.
Do you want your copy back? Was it my? Okay.
Do you want it back? So, next item on the agenda, discussion of 250 Turnpike 40B project eligibility letter. So, at our last meeting, I think that the eligibility letter came in that, that day. So, just wanted to put, put this on the agenda if there is any board comment on that. And I think-
I forget, did we send a letter to Mass Housing about this one?
Yes, we did.
Wow. Is there any way to pop that one into the Dropbox, please?
So, this, the comprehensive permit on this one has not been filed yet.
The comment letter that the planning board gave to Mass Housing.
Yes, please.
Do you know what that is called? Yeah. Yeah. Colleen's putting that in the Dropbox. Can you put it under 250? Yeah. See it? Got it? Yeah. Can you put it on the floor?
So, on this, there's nothing required of us at this time, but I just, since the eligibility came in at this, right before our last meeting, wanted to see if there was anything the board wanted to discuss on this.
Yeah. It's kind of typical a Mass Housing fashion to list a bunch of municipal comments and concerns, and I don't really see them addressing any of them in their determination of eligibility. So, that's just how they rule.
Yeah, I don't think that they do. Anything else on? No? Any questions, comments from anyone on Zoom? Have a question or comment on the eligibility letter for 250 Turnpike 40B? Okay. The next discussion item is the residents at Park Central 40B. So, we have a meeting posted for Wednesday to attend the next ZBA hearing on Park Central, at which time they're going to discuss traffic and the covenant.
Yep, that meeting is November 29th at 7:00 PM, I believe that's what it was advertised.
And that meeting is here, correct?
Yes.
That's correct. Planning board posted a meeting at, for the zoning board of appeals attendance, meeting, attendance at their meeting, November 29th at 7:00 PM, here at the, a call of hearing of. So, I did speak with ZBA admin Laura Davis regarding status of the sidewalk. Oh, no, that was, that's a different project, right?
No, that's Park Central.
Oh, that's right, okay. I'm sorry. So many going on. And she said that they have it on their list to address, but they're waiting for the applicant to respond when they will hold a, another sidewalk, actually, hold a sidewalk. So, that's pretty short.
Any questions or comments on Park Central? Anyone in the audience? Anyone on, yes, sir. Step on up.
Realizing that maybe the issues are different, still the same project. It still has the same objections to traffic on Flag Road. Those haven't been addressed. It sounds like it has additional issues with access through the two neighborhoods that I don't believe, I, I didn't think they asked for before. I don't see anything different. But, and now you've got three 40Bs that you have to deal with at the same time, one that's been the subject of a court case. The ZBA and the planning board have their hands full, and I commend you on your hard work and over the next couple of months.
Thank you.
That's just in the file.
Yeah. So, I think that's in relation to the covenant. Yeah, so, I don't know if the board saw that there was a 360-page letter from the proponent's attorney on the, so, the, I think the abutter's attorneys also sent their opinion, so I don't know how this will shake out, but we'll see on Wednesday. So, no other comments on this? I attend to, I attend to, I intend to attend the meeting on Wednesday. Is anyone else? Marnie? Okay. So, we, it looks like we will have a quorum, so. The next item on the agenda, MPIC goals review prioritize? I don't know if there's, is that?
So, we, we, we had a discussion on this last time. I, I don't have any update. I meet with my, the committee this week, and I haven't had the chance to speak with them yet. So, I have no update for you tonight.
Right, I know Debbie met with, spoke with Leah Emerson, EDC coordinator, and we're scheduled to meet this week as well to discuss some of the planning goals.
And I was just going to add, and if you recall, in the minutes, too, that we're hopefully approving tonight, in one of our other meetings, I said I'd bring the strategic prioritization framework together for, more broadly, but I thought I'd bring it together for planning board, so maybe take a stab at it before we talk about it, because I think we were going to come back as a team and just talk about the goals and, but have them in more of a short-term versus longer-term duration and help to prioritize to support our budget planning. So, I thought we could be the kind of guinea pigs for that framework, so I'll take a stab at that.
Thank you.
Well, I keep saying it, and then Deb finally held my, my feet to the flame this week, so.
Those full-time jobs just get in the way of everything. I think we can move on to the planner's report.
Couple things this evening. So, it's my understanding that the, we're, we're pending a scenic road tree removal application from the DPW for the November 2023 DPW list of resident requested trees to be removed. There was a partial application submitted, going back and providing additional information, so that's taking a little time. And I received feedback to the questions that the planning board had previously about, you know, can it be pushed to the spring, et cetera? And Chris Leroy is working with Bill Kondav to come up with additional information and, you know, if the arborist is going out there, a date so that the planning board has the opportunity to attend if they choose to. So, that's in the works.
But there isn't an answer on whether that can be pushed to the spring?
Let's see here. So, some of the questions. Assume Chris already evaluated the trees in November 2023 hearing list. Correct assumption. When the arborist is scheduled to view the trees on the list, please notify planning board so they have an opportunity to attend. There's a concern that since it's November, without leaves, the trees may appear dead if evaluated. Understood. The same process used as the past will be followed this time. Cliff will contact us with the date when he can. Let's see. It's my understanding you have a contract in place with tree removal companies? Correct. Are you planning on taking the trees down this winter or next spring? That is a call for Chris. I will let him chime in here. If intend to take the trees down in the spring, then maybe we can have a tree hearing in the spring after trees are leafed out, so we can have better assessment. Again, he's corresponding with Chris on that and will get back to us. Where did the tree photos come from when they were taken? He believes Chris takes the photos when he assesses the trees. Chris Leroy, tree warden designee. If there's been a previous arborist report, please provide reference to the tree identification number, so we know what trees we are talking about. Chris would know this, do this. That being said, this would be a great use of GIS. So, the planning board hoped to hold a public hearings for an unauthorized tree removal and would like to make sure that could happen at the same time, but not, or not forgotten, act on that even if the other trees are pushed out. So, DPW director provided a letter to the resident. They weren't home, so he dropped it off at the door, so we'll wait to see feedback. But the letter was drafted and submitted to the resident.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
That was a nicely written letter by the DPW chief, and it referenced, I think it referenced a potential fee. And I'm interested in that. I thought that we had to have something in a policy or bylaw or something about what the fee schedule might be, or is it simply a fee can be assigned by the tree warden? How does that work?
So, the policy was, if a tree is removed without following the process, that it's a inch per inch DBH, or if that's not possible, which in this case, I don't think, you can't plant a 40-inch tree, then a solution of, you know, shall be determined by the tree warden and the planning board on scenic roads, and this is scenic road.
And, and the, and the planning board?
Yes.
Yep, so, it, some, I mean, I think you found this as well, Mimi, in some of the research that we were doing way, way back when, when probably the tree policy was being written, some towns assign a dollar amount for every inch over a certain amount, let's say a dollar, I don't know, $10 for every inch over 12 inches or something like that. And I would think if we were going, I mean, I, I like this, I like this idea because I think it's a good deterrent. I am pretty disturbed by the fact that somebody moved into the town of Southborough probably because of the historic nature, the trees and the stone wall. They bought a beautiful, old, historic home on a beautiful scenic road, and within, I don't know how many weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, they chopped down one of the largest trees on the street left. And so, we have certainly a lot of education to do, but I do think that we should maybe start to think about formalizing, because I do fear that if we make up a fee for this particular scenario, that someone else, it may not be the same in the next circumstance. So, I think there should be some standardization, such as X dollars over every 12 inches or 24 inches or whatever the board decides. I think that would be something good to put in a scenic road policy. You know, I took an attempt at that, and that's helped, being helped by Mr. Lit and comments from you, and I have to get back to that, but I think that would be a good idea to crystallize our thoughts in something to do with scenic roads, because it's, it's just clear that we're not having an impact on, on what we're doing. Certainly made progress with the tree warden designee, but I still believe that the town, you know, that there's education that, and we have to get a little bit tougher to protect our, our scenic roads. Thanks.
Absolutely. Anyone else? You know, just one quick thing on the, the reason I asked whether the hearings could be delayed until the spring was because when we, when the select board was discussing the most current policy, the DPW superintendent pushed back against cutting trees in the fall and the winter, and he said they, they typically do all their cutting in the summer. So, if that is the case, it would be more advantageous to us to view trees when there are leaves on them. If they do it in the summer, we can have a hearing in the spring.
Right, and I did elaborate that in my questions to him. I just didn't read it fully here.
All right.
No, that's fine.
FYI, the annual town meeting date is set for Saturday, March 23rd, 2024. In regards to the mitigation of the scenic stone wall and trees removed at the park, the planning board's been waiting for feedback as to how that's being accomplished. We have correspondence from the DPW director with a couple of questions that we clarified regarding, you know, which particular trees were the ones that the planning board was concerned with, that it's not, that they're not native species. So, Mimi gave me some feedback, and I provided an email back to the, Bill Kondav, answering some of those questions. So, it's moving forward to getting some kind of response to that. Slow but sure.
Can, can Mr. Lit interrupt you?
Oh, sure.
Mr. Lit?
Tim Litwood, all right. Debbie mentioned that I've been trying to help her edit a document, and I just referred to it, and it notes that under state law, the unauthorized removal of a, of a tree has, is subject to a penalty of $500 or the value of the tree as determined by a certified arborist, whichever is greater.
Thank you.
Okay. And just to be clear, we clarified that um about the park tree mitigation. The trees in the park are the mitigation to replace the public shade trees removed without a hearing in accordance with the May 2nd, 2023 um posthumous.
Posthumous.
Posthumous. I say posthumous.
After the trees were already removed. Dead.
And the tree policy that was in place when that happened and the decision was made at that public hearing with the select board, um, called for native species at that time. The more recent tree policy um removed that requirement and relies on the 2019 public shade tree policy, uh, public shade tree guidelines. Street tree guidelines, yeah. So that's it for that. Let me just do a quick look here. Happy news, I um made my final comments on the zoning map. There were a lot of little, little breaks in where the boundaries were, so I identified all that and I sent it back to CAI Technologies, who's been quick to respond, but I think they're on vacation still from um the holiday, so I expect something back very soon on that. Talked about that somewhere. The planning board budget is due by the end of this week. They, it was extended for some of the departments, so again, I'm preparing that and Mimi's going to um work on any questions we have and clarify anything and then we'll present it back to the planning board, um, so at least we can get the draft submitted. So that's good and that, I believe that's what I have for this evening. Am I forgetting anything, Colleen? Oh, here. I want to make sure this was on here. Let me see here. No, I already read that, because you, okay, that's all I have for the planner's report. We do have four sets of meeting minutes that Colleen has processed.
So um the motion is to approve the planning board minutes from the October 16th, 2023 meeting.
Second. For discussion on line 39, the spelling of arbiculture. And if I can find it, I'll get there.
Yeah. Oh, arb.
It's A-R-B-O-R-I-C-U-L-T-U-R-E, one word? Arbiculture is one word. Anything else on 1016? Seeing no more comments, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brascio, yes.
Motion is to approve the planning board minutes from the meeting November 1st, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, abstain?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brascio abstain.
Did you abstain, Mimi?
I did, I wasn't.
Okay, hold on. Free, yes. Abstain, okay.
You good? Is all right? Uh, motion is to approve the planning board minutes from the meeting that took place on November 6th, 2023.
Second.
For discussion, I have one, Mimi?
Yes, Ms. Brascio?
On line 101, the sentence before it says, Ms. Latrell stated that the planning board would submit a comment letter to the ZBA prior to the December 13th. I think meeting should be after that. That's the only one, thank you.
Say it one more time, Lisa, you said uh.
So at the end on 101, Karina, it just, it ends with December 13th and I think it should say meeting after December 13th.
I got it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No.
I have a couple, line 37.
Eagle eyes over there.
The map was by the Metropolitan Planning Council, MAPC, not the collaborative. On line 95, after subdivision, I would put plan.
Line 95, after subdivision?
Yeah, Ms. Latrell stated that she did not see the, oh. I would just, she did not see a subdivision plan, not the creation as part of the application.
Just see the subdivision plan?
Yes, yeah.
Or the creation of a?
Yeah. Anything else? I have a motion and a second. Minutes as amended? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brascio, yes.
Uh, motion is to approve the minutes from the planning board meeting that took place on November 8th, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Uh, I intend to abstain.
Okay. All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Houlihan abstain.
Demiria, yes.
Brascio, yes.
Nope.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brascio, yes.